Here.
Commissioner Dean.
Here.
Commissioner Logan.
Here.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Shirtliff.
I see him, but I didn't hear. Would you rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The minutes from 5:323, Special Commission Meeting, 5:323 Admin Meeting, 5:823 Commission Meeting, and 5, is that 5:10? Special Budget Work Session were received. Do we have any directions, comments? The minutes will be received, submitted. Presentations. This item was previously tabled. We're bringing them back up. Approve Confirmation of Officers Leibel and Leschinsky. Chief Petty, you have the floor.
Do we have to have a commission vote on that?
Mayor, Commissioners, yes. You'd have to do a motion to take it off the table and vote on that, and then he can present the confirmation.
Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I will move, I will move to remove the confirmation from the table.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion? Madam Clerk, would you take the role?
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Shirtliff. Commissioner Shirtliff, can you attempt one more time for me to unmute? Okay, I, thank you. Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Okay, you have the floor. Chief Petty.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. You'll see two different spots because during the snafu I had with the last one, one of our other officers actually completed his probationary time within that time. So I'd like to present all three at once. I don't know if you folks have to take two votes on that, but I'll leave that to the Mayor and the Commission for that. So I'll bring up Officer Leibel, Leschinsky, and Weems, please. Thank you. So as previously stated, all three of these officers have successfully completed their one-year probationary period with the Helena Police Department. At the end of the probationary period, and under Montana state law, the appointment of the officer must be submitted to the City Commission. If the appointment is confirmed by the City Commission, then the officer becomes a member of our police force. With this said, I'm seeking a vote from the Commission to confirm these three officers tonight. Prior to having the Commission vote on the officer's confirmation, and if I may, I'd like to introduce the three officers to you and give a brief pile, if you don't mind.
Please.
First is Officer Leibel. He did show up, so that's good. Officer Bryce Leibel was born and raised in Butte, Montana. He attended Butte High School, where he played football and completed in track. Bryce attended Montana Tech for a short time for civil engineering, before leaving to follow his dream of getting into law enforcement to help people in the community. He worked for just under two years at the Montana State Prison in Deer Lodge before moving to Helena and working at the LCSO Detention Center, where he became a FTO, Transport Officer, and Gang Coordinator, before getting his dream job with the Helena Police Department. Officer Leibel plans on making a long career here and doing everything he can to help the department and the community. Next, Officer Nick Leschinsky, who's standing in the middle there. He was born and raised outside Boston, Massachusetts. He attended Norwich University in Northfield, Vermont, where he graduated with a bachelor's degree in Studies in War and Peace. He then moved back to Boston, where he worked in executive production for one year. After that year, he moved to Kalispell, Montana. He applied for the Helena Police Department and was given the opportunity to test and was hired in April of 2022. Officer Leschinsky has wanted to join law enforcement for as long as he can remember, and he has a strong dedication to service and has enjoyed serving the Helena community over the last year. Last but not least, Officer Weems. He joins us from California. He told me earlier not to hold that against him. Officer Weems and his family moved to Helena to settle into the community where they could best raise their children, and they have not been disappointed. This community has already shown Officer Weems and his family hospitality and kindness, and he wishes to return the favor in the years to come through his service as a City of Helena police officer. So with these three officers, I'd like to welcome these three officers. And with the introductions, if you may, could they give a brief little statement to the Mayor and Commission?
Yes, sir.
I really don't know where to start. Very honored to be able to have this chance to work here for the last year, and I can't thank the Chief enough. This is my third or fourth time applying, so I think he had a, felt bad for me, gave me the challenge, but I'm very excited and I hope to be what Helena deserves in their law enforcement.
Evening. I just want to thank everybody for the opportunity to serve the City of Helena, Mayor Collins and the Commission, and I want to thank Chief Petty for giving me the opportunity to serve the City of Helena, and I look forward to continuing to serve the City of Helena. Thank you.
Evening, Officer Weems. I just want to thank the Chief for the opportunity and my wife for the support, and just want to, I'm grateful to be here before the Commission today. Thank you.
If I'm not wrong, I think you all brought your families, right? Do you want to introduce your families?
I brought my fiancee in the back, Hannah Nelson. She's actually a deputy with the Sheriff's Office here, so.
I brought my fiancee Autumn in the back there. She works-
In the back?
She's hiding. She works for FEMA. She has supported me a lot through this journey, so thank you.
Good.
My wife and two kids are here. Alyssa Jeremiah, he's three, and my seven-month-old Adeline.
Where are they?
Alyssa, you raised the baby?
Okay.
Right there.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, Commission. And with that, I would like to ask the Commission to move to approve the confirmation of these three officers tonight. Again, due to them being separate on the agenda, I don't know if you need two votes or just one.
We can just go straight, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks. Commissioners, you, what do you have to say? You want to discuss anything? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, congratulations. And second, thank you for choosing Helena and choosing to be public servants in our community. Really appreciate your leadership and excited to see what your career brings. I know if the Chief is giving you a hard time, he probably likes you, so. Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
I would like to thank each of you for stepping forward. I know, you know, over the past several years, staffing has been a difficulty for the Helena Police Department. And the job that the three of you are filling now is, is one of the more difficult jobs in society as emergency responders, and particularly as law enforcement and police officers. You all see things that most of us will never see. And it's a, it's a big task and an important one, and I would just like to thank the three of you for stepping forward and wish you the best of luck in your careers. Thank you.
Thank you. I don't have much of a voice, so I will be brief, but thank you all. I've had the good fortune to work with the Helena Police Department for a number of years in a number of capacities. It's an excellent department. I'm sure you're going to love it there, and thank you for, for joining the force. Thank you.
Commissioner Shirtliff, you want to say something?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to the three officers for stepping up, and, but also too, thank you to your families, and appreciate your dedication and your service. And like Commissioner Dean said, thank you for choosing Helena. Glad to have you. Welcome aboard.
Thank you. Chief, are you all filled up now? You at hundred percent?
No, sir. Three vacancies. We are, we just got applications in. Application deadline ended May 15th. June 17th, we'll be running the next testing. We have 45 applications, rough, so we actually have a large pool that we'll be selecting from and hoping it's very competitive.
Okay. Well, officers, thanks for choosing Helena. We appreciate you being here, and we want you to know that whatever we can do as a Commission to assist you in making your job easier, please let Chief know he will let us know. All right? Let's give them a round of applause.
Mr. Mayor, I might, I can make a motion to-
Go ahead.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve the confirmation of Officers Leibel, Leschinsky, and Weems.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion? Madam Clerk, would you take the vote?
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shirtliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Okay, moving along, we have proclamations. Don't Fry Day, City of Helena Proclamation. Whereas more than 5 million Americans are diagnosed with skin cancer each year, making it the most common cancer diagnosed in the United States, and whereas one American dies every 45 minutes from skin cancer, and whereas the Surgeon General has issued a call to action to prevent skin cancer, and whereas the National Council on Skin Cancer Prevention has designated Friday before Memorial Day as Don't Fry Day to encourage sun safety awareness and to remind everyone to protect their skin while enjoying the outdoors. And whereas the most common type of skin cancer, including melanoma, the deadliest form of skin cancer are strongly associated with exposure to UV radiation, whereas individuals can take steps to reduce the risk of developing skin cancer by being sun aware. Sun protection helps prevent the harmful effects of UV exposures, including sunburn, skin cancer, premature skin aging, and eye damage. And therefore, be it resolved that I, Will MacCollins, Mayor of the City of Helena, Montana, do hereby proclaim May 26, 2023, as Don't Fry Day. Throughout this city, and I urge all the people of Helena to take, to take cognizance of this event and participate fitnly in its observance. In witness hereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Helena, Montana, to be affixed this 22nd day of May 2023, attest Clerk of the Commission, Dana Clayborne. Do we have, um, Liga Shilhanki?
We'll introduce ourselves.
Okay.
Hi there. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for having us. We're here on behalf of Eliza and Carrie Fairbrother, who work tirelessly to promote skin cancer prevention in the community. I'm Leah Shilhank, nurse practitioner, and this is Jody Isbell. We're from up the street at Associated Dermatology, and we're happy to be here today to accept this proclamation and just want to say thank you for taking this time and thank you for the Committee for having us just to bring awareness to this important issue. Jody, I'd like to say a few things about skin cancer, if you don't mind.
Please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commission. We are very grateful for the proclamation, especially on behalf of all of the patients we're already seeing come into our clinics with big sunburns. Between 2016 and 2020, melanoma in particular in Montana was, we were having about an average of 380 cases, new cases, a year, and 95% of those cases were preventable by UV protection. So sunscreen, lots of sun-protective clothing. And we actually have a little bit higher rate in Montana for melanoma than the national average, but our cure rate is right up there, too. So, thank you very much. Happy summer.
You bet. Thank you. Okay, the next proclamation we have here is National Gun Violence Awareness Day Proclamation. City of Helena Proclamation. Whereas every day more than 120 Americans are killed by gun violence alongside more than 200 who are shot and wounded, and on average, there are more than 17,000 gun homicide every year. Whereas Americans are 26 times more likely to die by gun than people in other high-income countries. Montana has 228 gun deaths every year, with a rate of 20.6 deaths per 100,000 people. Montana has the ninth-highest rate of gun death in the US. And whereas gun homicide and assaults are concentrated in cities with more than half of all firearms-related gun death in the nation occurring in 127 cities. Cities across the nation, including Helena, are working to end senseless violence with evidence-based solutions. And whereas the mayor's highest responsibility is protecting the public safety in the communities they serve, support for the Second Amendment rights of law-abiding citizens goes hand in hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories. And whereas mayor and law enforcement officers are the most familiar with local criminal activities and how to address them, they are also best positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe. Gun violence prevention is more important than ever as the COVID-19 pandemic continues to exacerbate gun violence after more than a year of increased gun sales, increased calls to suicide, domestic violence hotlines, and an increase in city gun violence. And whereas in January 2013, Hadija Pennington was tragically shot and killed at age 15, we recognize her 26th birthday on June 2, 2023. As people across the United States recognize National Gun Violence Awareness Day and wear orange in tribute to Hadija Pennington and others victims of gun violence, as well as the loved ones of those victims. And whereas the tribute was inspired by a group of Hadija's friends who asked Clad's Mid to commemorate her life by wearing orange. They chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when they were out in the woods. And orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas anyone can join this campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 2, the first Friday in June 2023, to help raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. We renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children safe. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Will MacCollins, Mayor of the Helena, City of Helena, do hereby proclaim the first Friday in June, June 2, 2023, as National Gun Violence Awareness Day. Throughout this city, and I urge all people of Helena to support the local community's efforts to prevent tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human lives. In witness hereof, I hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of Helena, Montana, to be affixed this 22nd day of May 2023, Will MacCollins, Mayor, Clerk of the Commission, Dana Clayborne. Do we have Kara Urby?
Mayor Collins, Commission, thank you so much. I'm Kara Uribe. I lead up the Local Moms Demand Action. Thank you so much for this proclamation. As you mentioned, Mayor Collins, over 120 people daily are killed by gun violence. 200 more are injured. This is something that's so critical to our communities, and we appreciate this. And on June 3, we will wear orange. We'll be at the farmer's market, and we welcome all Helennans to partake. Again, nonpartisan, this is just to come together and bring awareness to such a critical issue. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Board Appointments. Appointment of Sharon Haugen to first term on the Helena Housing Authority term will expire August 1, 2026. Commissioners, anything? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I am happy to move the appointment for the Helena Housing Authority, the appointment of Sharon Haugen to a first term on the Helena Housing Authority term will expire August 1, 2026.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion from the Commission?
Mr. Mayor, I'd just say that I think this is a pretty good get for the Helena Housing Authority to get such an expert. And Sharon is clearly not enjoying retirement enough.
Do we have any public comments on this? Madam Clerk, I'll entertain the vote.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shirtliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Consent Agenda. A, Adoption of the Official Zoning Map for the City of Helena. B, Consider Final Passage of the Ordinance Pre-Zoning of RU Residential Urban Prior to Annexing Into the City of Helena, Property Legally Described as a Portion of Track, Track A1, 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 A1A of the amended plat number 3386391, located within the south of Section 26 and the north and southeast of Section 35, Township 10, North Range 3, West PMM Lewis and Clark County, and being known as Craftsman Village, Phases 8, 9, and 10 of the crossword at Mountain View Meadows. Okay, Commissioners, any discussion? Okay, do we have any public comments? Madam Clerk, do we, okay. Do we have any public comments online?
Apologies, Mr. Mayor.
That's okay.
I do not have any public comment online.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I would move to accept Consent Agenda Items A and B.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion? Madam Clerk, will you entertain the vote?
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shirtliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Bid Award. Bid Award for Eureka Well and Pump Station Rehabilitation Project Number 20-10. Manager Burton and/or Public Works Director Leland and/or City Engineer Jamie Clark. You have the floor.
Mayor and Commission, this is just a bid award for the rehabilitation of the Eureka Well on South Main Street, which provides, oh, in the winter, maybe 30%, 25% of the city's drinking water. It was first built maybe the 1890s and then rebuilt again in the late 80s. We had two bidders, and low bidder was MJD Contracting of Helena, Montana, for $794,000. And the, the design engineer was a consultant named Pioneer Technologies, and they recommend the bid award.
Thank you. Commission comments? Any public comments? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
I'll entertain a, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Would move to award the Eureka Well and Pump Station Rehabilitation Project Number 20-10 to the lowest responsive bidder, MJD Contracting LLC, in the amount of $794,000.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shirtliff.
He's frozen.
I can see that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mayor Collins.
Aye.
Commissioner Shirtliff, can you turn on your audio? The motion carries four to zero.
Yeah.
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you. It was, Mr. Clark. Report of the City Attorney.
Mayor Commissioners, I have nothing to report tonight.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Bid Award on, did we have another bid award?
Oh geez, yeah, 10 miles. That's why you were standing there.
Yes.
I apologize. I was wondering why you were standing.
Yes, Mayor, I just, I don't like to just linger. I'm not one of those guys.
I apologize. Bid Award for 10-mile water treatment plant Filter Rehabilitation Project Number 20-09. You have the floor, Engineer Clark.
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. This project is a long time coming. We've had a decline of about 30% in production at the 10-mile water treatment plant. And the design and evaluation of filters has been undergoing about two years. Our consultant AE2S came up with a great design up with a great design using ARPA funds, and we had four bidders for the project, and the lowest responsive bidder was Helena Sand and Gravel with a bid price of $1.89 million. Happy to answer any questions.
Comments from the Commission? Are there any public comments on this? Madam Clerk, do we have any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I will move to award the base bid and additive alternate one of the 10-mile water treatment plant filter rehabilitation project number 20-09 to the lowest responsive bidder, Helena Sand and Gravel Incorporated, in the amount of $1,890,000.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Engineer Clark. Proposals from the Commission?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I do. Sorry. So, I received a, an email from a citizen that, that had explained a problem that I'd never really thought of, but he was essentially enjoying a cup of tea in his house one morning, when all of a sudden he looked out his window and saw a drone flying. And he expressed some concern and went out into the street to find out what was going on, and it turned out it was a legitimate, um, you know, a person was photographing a nearby house for a, for a potential sale. But he was a little distressed that, of the potential of an invasion of privacy, and, and asked if I would inquire, which I did with the city manager who reached out to the city attorney and the police chief, and, and I guess what I'm asking tonight or proposing is maybe we have, if the Commission would be agreeable, have staff, no mad rush on this. I know, you know, we're in the middle of budget season and trying to figure out how to spend ARPA dollars and so on. But at their earliest convenience, maybe look into potential ways to address concerns that citizens may have relative to that, somewhat emerging technology. Thank you.
While you're at it, look at AI also. Yeah, thank you, Commissioner. Any others? Okay, we heard your report, uh, City Attorney, uh, report from the City Manager.
Mayor, I have nothing to report this evening.
Thank you. Communications from Helena Citizens Council, Representative Schwachert. Madam Clerk, do we have them online?
Mr. Mayor, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right. Ryan Schwachert from the Helena Citizens Council, 5th District. Thank you for the opportunity to keep the Commission and City up to date on what we've been working on. Briefly, in our previous two months' meetings, we've been conducting outreach into our respective districts, actually going door-to-door with some door hangers and meeting with our constituency. Overall, so far, the feedback's been fairly positive, and we're going to continue those efforts in our community engagement. At last month's HCC meeting during our public comment period, we did have a number of folks bring up some continuing concerns, which I'm sure the City Commission has heard, and I won't have to go into full detail, but some folks from the 5th District specifically concerned about tree removal and how the city may improve on future communications whenever possible. So just wanted to share that piece. And we are also continuing to work on our budgetary recommendations, and we're planning on having them finalized and submitted to the City Commission quite shortly. The other, only other two points we had, HCC did have several members from a variety of our districts attend the May 10th board training, which was definitely helpful, and again, some positive feedback from the members that did attend. And finally, we were present at the Spring Art Walk over at Birds and Beesley's. The purpose of that was to, again, continually engage the public, keep them informed about who we are and how they can become more involved or reach out to their specific district reps with questions, concerns, or any feedback on things that are happening in our community. Any questions from the Mayor, the City Commissioners?
Comments or questions? Thank you, Mrs. Schwachert.
Thank you all again.
Regular items. Consider the removal of Residential District B, 1100 Billings Avenue. Director Knopki, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners.
Good evening.
Currently, there is a residential parking district at the 1100 block of Billings, basically. It's between Montana Avenue and Dakota. It involves approximately 12 residents. We received, it was created in, back in September 1993 by Resolution 10653. Recently, we received a request by petition to remove the residential parking-only district. Received, one of the petitioners did come in and cross off their name from there, and we received an opponent, a letter in opposition, but they still meet the 50% requirement for removal. There may be residents online or here tonight to discuss this, but since they do meet the 50%, they do meet the requirements for the removal of the district. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director Knopki. Comments or questions from the Commission? Please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director Knopki, just for the sake of the public, in addition to having a sign that says residentially parking, what, what goes along with being a district like this?
Uh, Mayor and Commissioners, residential parking districts are just that. They're signed as residential only, so unless you have a residential permit in your window and the parking control officers go by, you will be ticketed accordingly.
Any other comments from the Commission?
Mr. Mayor, can you, so this is covering getting rid of a district. For example, that, one of the public comments we got, they're afraid that the issues will happen again that were occurring 25 years ago. What is the, what is the process to implement this type of district?
Uh, Mayor and Commissioners, it's again a petition by the area, whether it's a block, a corridor, to put in a residential parking district, and then there's fees associated with the signage and then the annual residential parking fees associated with it. Not, not horrible, but it's, it's still a process.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. I think that was my original question. So the people in the district do pay those fees, or are the fees assumed by the city?
Uh, Mayor and Commissioners, the members of the district pay for the fees.
And is that an annual fee? What does that look like?
The parking permits are an annual fee. The initial installation is obviously a one-time fee.
Thank you.
Do we have any public comments on this topic? Please.
Mr. Mayor, Members of the Commission, my name is Dave Gallic. I own the property at 1124 and 1120. With me today is my assistant, Veronica White, and also Mr. Jim Partis, who owns the property right across the street, the one with the time and temperature sign. He's got the parking lot in his office, and then he owns that property behind him also. We are opposed to the removal of this district. Now, my understanding is that in order to create a district, according to the resolution of the City of Helena, Resolution Number 20071 subsection C, it requires more than 50% of the residents within the proposed residential parking district must sign the petition for consideration by the Commission. That is to create it, okay? So now my understanding is, to get rid of it, it's a less burden. It's only 50%. Why would it be 50, more than 50% to create it and only 50% to get rid of it? I think the question will probably be moot because the petition as signed, as the staff member mentioned, a couple of people had removed their names. I have with me today Mr. Furshong's note saying that he and his wife are very much in favor of keeping the parking district restrictions in front of our property. Best, Jim Furshong, 111116 Billings Avenue. So if you take Mr. Furshong off of the list, there is not, there's not seven people. There's only six. If you look at the map, there are 14 lots along both sides, seven on each side. So half, 50%, would be seven. They have six. Now that Mr. Furshong has removed his signature, I don't think it's a sufficient amount for you to act by removing the district because it doesn't meet the requirements of the removal. And I believe the removal are, should be the same as the addition. So I think it's one short as you have the rules right now to remove it. There needs to be seven, and there's only six. But in my opinion, there would need to be eight in order for you to consider removal because that's what it takes for me to try to go out and create it again. So it just doesn't quite seem fair in that regard. So that's my public comment, and I'm hopeful that you deny this request to remove it. The reason why it's important is we are right across from Helena High School. My office, 1124, and Mr. Partis's clinic, what he has there now, is right across Montana Avenue from Helena High School. As soon as that sign goes down, all those kids are going to fill it up. Now, they may not fill it up all the way to the other end of the block because they could walk from their parking lot at Helena High School just as far. Probably too far, that's my guess, but they're going to fill it up right in front of my office. And the parking for the residents, I own the other property, which is next door, it's a residential rental, they're not going to have a place to park. And so I believe that under the circumstances, it's probably premature. I was hopeful that we would be able to, I had a meeting with one of the folks who were in favor of this, Matthew Pettit, and my hope was, it looked to me like it was going to split right down the middle. The ones closest to Montana Avenue, myself and Mr. Partis, being in favor of keeping it, those ones on the far end, closer to Vigilante Stadium, in favor of getting rid of it. And we would say, simple, all of the people here have decided this is what we'd like, we'd like to split it in half. Is that too far in? Anyway, that's my comment. We can't do that now because one of the people who pulled their, their name off of this is at the far end. So we're just asking you to deny it. That's my request. Questions?
Thank you, sir.
Mayor Collins and Members of the Commission, thank you for taking the time to consider this. This was news to me until I got the letter from the Parking Commission. It would have seemed appropriate that they would have contacted us and said, are you interested in this? But we weren't. So anyway, I'm fully behind Dave Gallic. I own the property that's adjacent, just right across from Dave Gallic's, and then I have the rental house right behind me. And I could be wrong, but I believe they are in favor of the parking being kept as it is with the, my current residents, tenants. So Dave brought up a very good point, and the whole reason this was implemented is we had high school students parking there day, you know, Monday through Friday, and all of the residents had no parking. So that was the whole reason this was implemented in the first place and why it passed. I don't know why it, it hasn't, that portion hasn't changed. So we're still in the same situation at this point. So I would urge you to leave it, leave it as it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments on this topic?
Mayor, Commissioners, my name's Matt Pettit. I circulated the petition. I've lived on the block for six years, so wasn't there to experience the issues with parking, Dave and, I'm sorry, we haven't.
Sir.
And, and Patricia, my other neighbor, who's, who's in attendance.
Sir.
Yes.
I apologize to interrupt. Those listening online can't hear you if you turn away from the mic.
Apologies. So I'm here to defend our request to remove the parking district. Even as the Furshongs remove their signatures, we still have half of the addresses on the block supporting removal. 12 addresses on the block, six supporters signed the petition. That is the threshold for removal. To add a little weight to those six signatures, of the 12 addresses on the block, 10 are residences, two are commercial, and two others are rentals, as, as the two speakers already mentioned. They don't get a say. So they can, they have to follow what their business, their homeowners sort of direct, right? So of the resident owners on the block, we have a majority. Those of us who live there and would have to pay to park in front of our own homes no longer want that burden. To add to that, I, I have done a survey all through the alleys. Everybody has off-street parking available to them. So even if we do experience a little bit of parking pressure from the high school, everybody has a relief valve in their own garages and driveways off the alley. So I do think that, that while, while this is potentially an inconvenience for those people who are opposed to the removal of the parking restriction, I think there's plenty of relief from that parking pressure available in the neighborhood. And that's my statement. Any questions? Thank you.
Do we have any other public comments?
Mayor, Commission, thank you for, for having me. I'm Alan on Arpen. I own 1100 Billings Avenue. I'm on the corner of Dakota and Billings. I know the previous owner had never purchased a parking permit and had kind of just struggled, and so had just continued to park around the corner. And we don't plan on purchasing a parking permit. We continue to navigate the times in which we can park out front of our house, which times we can park off on Dakota there. Most of our parking pressure comes from track meets and football games, and those don't generally fall in the lines of the parking or the, with that, the district anyway. It, it is an inconvenience for our family, and we don't plan on, you know, necessarily abiding by it. We'd like to see it go away. And I know that that parking situation at the high school has changed a lot since 1993. I know that the situation, I'm a public school teacher myself, I know that they've, that district's done a lot to, to add a lot of parking, and I think that that situation has, has kind of taken care of itself. And so, anyway, thanks again, and I would really support removing that district. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments from the public online or here at present?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Ma'am, are you going to comment? Okay. All right. Director Knopki?
Yes, Mayor and Commission.
Comments from the Commission?
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of questions, as you can probably guess. We do not have the letter from Mr. Furshong in our packet. Do you have that, or does the city have that?
Mayor and Commission, we did not receive a copy of that letter as well.
Director Knopki, would you give it to the clerk, please?
Yep.
So I guess, Mr. Mayor, and I don't know if Director Knopki wants to answer this, or the city attorney, I guess I'm a little bit confused about what the threshold actually is, and if this changes, this changes that or not.
So, Mayor and Commission, on the procedure to remove a district, it just says sign no fewer than half. So, you know, we just need basically half, 50% or more to remove, and then it was kind of similar language in the application to create one more than 50%. So in, in my mind, it's creating a percentage that at least half of the people are either in favor of a creation or in favor of removal.
And can you remind me how many homes there are, I guess?
There are 12 properties. I believe that was in, in your packet, but I can bring it up here. And prior to the signature being removed here, there was one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. And then there was the removal of that, so that leaves seven.
So we're still over 50, we're still at 50%?
It appears so, Mayor and Commission.
Okay. And then just one final And then just one final question, Mr. Mayor. Is it possible, if, if we vote to remove this district, for those folks that live closer to the high school, if they wanted to explore a smaller district, is that possible?
Uh, Mayor and Commissioner, yes, that is.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director Knopki, I'm counting thirteen on this map. There's six on one side, seven on the other.
Right.
And I'm, the list that the original petition has, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, one has come off, so we're at seven, which is over fifty percent. And I just want to make sure, it seemed like there was a lot of new, new information about other names, so we have seven valid of the thirteen. Is that correct?
Yes, that appears correct.
That's where I'm getting a little confused. It seems like there might've been another one that came off, but I'm not sure which name. Patricia Clark, okay, so that leaves us at six.
Mayor?
Yes.
Nobody can hear that online, and so you might invite somebody to come up and speak if indeed you want to hear from them.
Until you're recognized, please.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, maybe I can clarify through a question to the director, and we could, we can handle it that way. So Director Knopki, on the map you're showing us, these are the properties that are part of the district currently, even if one of those houses is located on Dakota. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, 'cause it was, excuse me, the district was created between Montana and Dakota, so anything that fronted, or fronted, has frontage on Billings are, would be part of the district.
Okay, so we have the thirteen properties that are shown on the map, and now we have six signatures.
Do we have any information from the female you're talking about? Do you? Please.
Mayor, Commission, the individual on number nine, has a circle and an X, was the lady that visited my office and had asked to be removed.
Okay. And what's her name?
As we were speaking of this, I, I recall that that's how it was marked, where the other one was lined, and so when I re-looked at, at the petition, nine had the circle and the X, and that, that elderly lady had initially signed it, and then within a couple of days after that, had came to my office and discussed that with me and changed her mind.
Okay. Thank you.
Right, good, so, thank you. My apologies for the misunderstanding, and it was marked different.
That's okay.
Than the rest.
Except. Commissioner, are you done?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, quick question. So, we, for this removal to be successful, we require fifty percent of those paying the permit, the fee for the permit. Is that accurate?
Uh, Mayor and Commissioner, that's correct.
And we don't have fifty percent.
It does not appear so at this time, now that, I know Patricia Clark, number nine, has been removed.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I guess I would look at the city attorney. It'd be most appropriate to move to table. Is that accurate?
So, we heard you. Commissioners, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to table. The removal of residential District B, 1100 Billings Avenue.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff? Commissioner Shertliff?
Okay, he raised his finger.
Mayor Collins? Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Consider a sidewalk variance request to allow curbside sidewalk at ten, at 1621 University Street. Director Knopki, you have the floor.
Thank, thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. As you stated, this request to allow curbside sidewalk at 1621 University. Currently in the area, there is very limited, there's no sidewalks along University. The project, the address in question is the second one on the bottom there. That gives a little bit zoomed-in view of the property. It's the one on the right on the bottom. The owner's requesting the sidewalks to be curbside because of the topography that is at the site. The house does sit quite a bit higher than the roadway. There would be definitely some challenges in, installing boulevard sidewalk in that location. The, the reason for his request is the bottom portion of his driveway that was included in the packet materials is deteriorating, pretty broken up and cracked in places. There are utilities in the area just along the property line there, as their pictures went out, and then you can see the boxes in this picture as well. So, putting in curbside sidewalk always comes with its disadvantages. Doesn't allow for snow storage, so that snow berm gets created, that gets created is three, two, three, or four feet out into the roadway, so that it doesn't cover the sidewalks. In this one, again, we're just, he's just asking for the variance from the one-foot requirement to place the sidewalks, one foot from the property line to basically curbside. This right-of-way is sixty-six feet wide. It's a bit wider than our local road. But again, with the topography of his home, or their home, it would be challenging to do it, not impossible, but it'd be challenging. So, we move to approve table or deny this variance, allowing curbside sidewalk at 1621 University Street. Be happy to answer any questions.
What did you just say? You, you moved to what?
Approve table or deny. We'd be happy to answer questions concerning the grade of the, and we could answer any questions, sorry.
Thank you. Comments from the commission?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Um, thank you, Director Knopki. This is currently not a finished street. Is that accurate?
Mayor and Commissioner, it was paved with the Westside Utility Project.
Okay, does it?
This, this is an old photo from, I believe, eighteen, nineteen.
Does it have curb and gutter then as well?
Uh, Mayor and Commissioner, no, there's no curb and gutter along that, that property. Oh, it's not, sorry. I thought that portion got paved. My apologies.
So I guess with that, should we, oh, and given that it's, it's wider than a standard street as of, as of now, should this be turned into a complete streets with curb gutter pavement? Is there the ability to add boulevards, should the street ever be completed?
Uh, Mayor and Commissioner, that's the, kind of the crux of this request, because of the steepness of, or the place, the elevation of his house. If he were just to replace the sidewalk, or the driveway as it is, it would go back, but to bring the, say, the edge of roadway out for the boulevard and then put the sidewalk in there as a boulevard sidewalk, that would increase, that would cause that first portion of his driveway to be fairly steep, and then flattened for the sidewalk, and then up to the re, the rest of his driveway. With this, there is an opportunity to, I think, meet both goals, to try to work with the property owner, and maybe not push it all the way to curbside, but maybe look, appear, look at a smaller boulevard, so that we can still meet those standards, but also recognize his topography issues.
Mr. Mayor, one more follow-up then. So if we were to approve the motion as it's written to allow a variance, allowing a curbside sidewalk, does that mean we would have the flexibility to say, you know, maybe it's not a standard boulevard, but somewhat of a boulevard, so we don't have snow storage going way into the right-of-way?
Uh, Mayor and Commissioners, the motion, yes, would have to be not what is recommended here, with some qual, or qualifiers saying that, you know, we'll work with the applicant to try to fit in as much boulevard as possible. But yes, that's possible.
Okay.
Other comments from the commission?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Director Knopki. So when you say less of a boulevard, boulevard, if we are doing a complete street in that neighborhood, do we end up with sort of a, a patchwork problem? What, what would that look like if there was development all along the street? Is there a lot of wiggle room there, or can you talk to me about what that would look like? Thank you.
Mayor and Commissioners, this is an issue that we run into with existing neighborhoods that, you know, in this case are unimproved roadways. So where they ended up, you know, building their home, back when it was built, maybe didn't contemplate the road there or complete streets, this is where we have to, I think, work with property owners to still meet the city's desire for complete streets, and making sure that it's accessible. But like I said before, recognizing that we have some existing conditions that can be challenging to overcome in some cases. And in this case, the, if you go back to this overall view, and you look along the parcel lines there, you know, in this case, there might be, I think there's some wiggle room. To make it work, the south side here, or the bottom portion of the page, those homes are elevated just because of the way the topography goes, but the homes on the north are, are pretty much street level. So, again, it's not perfect, but there may be an opportunity to meander the sidewalk closer into the roadway, so that there's not as a big issue, and then me, and then come back out, or at least establish some sort of boulevard along the south side of the roadway there.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, just a quick follow-up. Thank you for that, Mr. Director Knopki. So the motion, if we were to make it, would be to deny the variance or to allow a variance within complete streets? What would the recommendation be in order to give the wiggle room you're talking about?
Uh, Mayor and Commissioners, the, the owners to build the sidewalks specifically talks about one foot from the property line. They can request a variance from the City Commission for placement of anywhere from that one foot to the edge of where the typical roadway would be. So in this case, you, you could make a motion to work with city staff, or if you determine that you want a specific width of boulevard, you can, no narrower than X feet of boulevard, however you would like to word, work it, we would be more than happy to work with the homeowner to make sure that we try to accomplish both goals.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So Director Knopki, if the applicant had their way, on, let's see, what page is it? I don't think we've seen it on the screen, but in our packet, it says page ninety-nine. I think it's down below what you have shown here. There's a, first of all, there's a slide that says utility lines, and then there's a picture showing basically the bottom of the driveway. So if the applicant, the Van Aymerins had their way, where would that proposed curbside sidewalk go?
Uh, Mayor and Commissioners, we would take basically the center line of the right-of-way. We would offset it with our typical section for a local street, and providing the width for the lane, the driving lane, parking lane, and curb and gutter, and at the back of the curb, that would be where the sidewalk would go.
So roughly in their existing driveway, where, where would that be? Would that be above the utility lines? Roughly going along the fence line? Or in line with the fence?
The picture here, the line doesn't show that exactly center of the right-of-way, so it would be close to those utility lines.
Okay. Thank you.
Do you have what we have?
Yes, I just, I added these for a little bit higher clarification for, to show the area more than.
So essentially, the sidewalk would be well up into their existing driveway. Is that accurate?
Uh, it would probably, it would probably take up, sixty-six would be thirty-three, so it would take up probably seven feet of their existing driveway.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Any others? Do you have any public comments? Please.
Hi, I'm Eric Van Aymeren. Thanks for your time. I was hoping that my photographs that you referenced would be available, because you really can't see from this photo what we're dealing with. Utility lines go across, oh, probably halfway, but you could see the electrical box over there on the lawn. It goes straight across underneath our driveway, to the other side. There's, yeah, there's a manhole over there. So that crack developed there a few years ago, and since then, it's just, there's a hollow area underneath and it's caving in. And there's now literally areas where I could reach down and it's hollow. So it's, it's probably a, a month or two away from becoming just nonusable. Now, the photographs that I included show how steep it is, and it's very steep. And during the winter, as it is, there are certain days, snowy or icy days, where we, we can't make it up in our vehicles, so we'll pry and then slide down and park. Yeah, sorry. Slide down the hill and park temporarily until we could, you know, shovel and put sand down and get up into the garage. I mean it quite literally, that if we weren't able to replace the concrete in its existing configuration there, it would become so steep that it would be impossible. Our garage would just be nonusable. So I'm hoping that, I had no idea this was even an issue. We bought this house ten years after it was built, knew nothing about this, this potential issue until last month. So we have a driveway that's collapsing, we need to get it fixed before one of our vehicles, you know, sinks into the hole, or a delivery driver, you know, breaks his ankle going up the hill. So I'm hoping we can resolve that pretty quickly. And you'll notice that our driveway is in line with the neighbor's driveway. Our, both of our lawns go down to the same spot with the sprinkler system. I don't remember who it was specifically that I spoke to, it, it's been a while, but it was commented that this road is so narrow that to actually do what the city code requires with the, with the gutters and the sidewalks, it would, there's just not enough room to do that. So in a perfect world, what I would like to see is just a simple pad of asphalt laid down, much like the other streets to the west of us have.
Good.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments from the public on this topic? Madam Clerk, do we have any online?
Mr. Mayor, I have no public comment online.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, a question for Mr. Van Aymeren, please.
Please.
So, we have a picture here that shows where the utility lines are, and it's taken a little bit east of your home, shows the driveway pretty well and the utility line crossing. And it's taken a little bit east of your home, shows the driveway pretty well and the utility line crossing that. I'm assuming that a sidewalk, as required by complete streets, would be above that utility line. Is that your understanding?
Yeah, yes.
So then that approach to that sidewalk from the street for your vehicle, if I'm envisioning it correctly, would be pretty steep.
Impossible.
To get up to that sidewalk. And as you know, I've parked on that driveway a number of times. Our daughters were friends in grade school. So I know it's a pretty steep driveway. And so if the sidewalk is put in a foot from the property line, that's going to be above that utility line by a section of the driveway. And so the ramp getting up there is going to be really steep. And I think, you know, this is going to be kind of a burden for them.
Unless we sell our vehicles and buy some heavy-duty off-road four-wheel-drive vehicles, then yeah, it would be impossible.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Van Aymeren.
All right, go ahead.
Mayor Commissioners, I apologize for failing to recognize this, but I think we have figured out a way to resolve this. Because of this area, you know, with the unimproved roadways, typically we improve, unimprove roadways through an SID, and we allow for waivers of protest for an SID. So since this isn't really work on the primary residence, in discussion with the city attorney, I think we can go about it in this manner. Deny the variance because it's just maintenance on his existing driveway. Deny the variance with the action of potential of, or with the requirement that he waives the right to protest of SID in the future. That would allow him to fix his driveway now. And then any potential improvements along the roadway would have to contemplate those driveways approaches in the future.
Comments from the Commission?
Mr. Mayor, a question from Mr. Van Aymeren then. How does that sound to you?
That sounds good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Are you done, Director Knopki?
If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to make a motion.
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I move to deny a sidewalk variance request to allow curbside sidewalk at 1621 University Street with a requirement that the owner cannot refuse an SID district in the future.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff? Thank you. I see you, Commissioner. Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Okay. The previously tabled item.
Oh, C. Mayor, excuse me. There's another sidewalk variance, sorry.
Okay, go ahead. You still have the floor, Dan.
Mayor Commissioners, this is the sidewalk variance request for 870 Elizabeth Street. Again, I just, this isn't in your packet, but I wanted to give you a more bird's-eye view of this property. It's the vacant piece right here in the center of the screen. As you can see, again, this is another piece of property on the west side. Has unimproved roads in the area. They are anticipating improving that entire lot that runs along Elizabeth Street, which runs north and, or yes, Elizabeth Street that runs north and south to the east of that lot, and Hauser running east and west. The, as we, 742, all persons owning shall build sidewalks, curbs, and gutter for such property when work is done on the primary residence. Moving, the applicant has justified, you know, the applicant has requested not to install curb and gutter at some point along this property because of the unimproved roadway section. So he's requesting installation of sidewalks along Hauser Boulevard, which is the east-west route, to be allowed six feet from the property line instead of the code one foot. And that is because the right-of-way here, I believe, is 80 feet. So in order to move that right-of-way width down to what we would envision it in the future, would be something narrower than 80 feet. The six feet works for that typical section. The applicant is also requesting a variance to not install curb and gutter along both Elizabeth Street and Hauser Boulevard adjacent to 870 Elizabeth. So Elizabeth Street is the north-south piece there. Since it's very unimproved, the likelihood of that curb and gutter being either undermined or having to be removed in the future is likely. So staff agree with that. Long Hauser because of the, sorry. However, allowing the applicant not to install curb and gutter with a storm in along Hauser would lead to stormwater pooling. There is a low point in Hauser. There's a culvert that goes across. It's not exactly at the low point of the property, but it's fairly close. So by not installing curb and gutter along Hauser, in this case, we would have the sidewalks being installed with basically natural ground between it. And with that low point, could, ponding could occur and cause problems with that sidewalk or runoff could erode underneath and undermine the sidewalk. So that is why we moved to approve the sidewalk variance, allowing sidewalks adjacent to 870 Elizabeth along Hauser installed six feet from the property line and allowing a waiver of protest for a future SID to be signed in lieu of installation of curb and gutter along Elizabeth Street. And I'd be happy to answer any questions on this one as well.
Commissioners, comments or questions? Do you have any public comments on this?
Mr. Mayor, members of the Commission, my name is Matt Coats. And I was born and raised in West Helena, spent most of my adult life there. Spent the last six years in the distant hamlet of Remini. And I'm happy to come back home. So thank you, and we look forward to working with the city to get this lot done and get our house in.
Thank you. Do you have any other comments?
Mayor and Commissioners, my name is Sarah Perry. I live at 2636 Woodward Avenue, west of this area. And I just wanted to make sure that whatever decision is made here, it takes into consideration the large amount of additional traffic that this street, this section of Hauser, is likely to see in the coming years. Not only is there going to be that particular lot developed, but this street is going to be seeing traffic from West Side Woods, west of here in the future. And if you look at this map, there's a lot of undeveloped lots all around that. Infill development is encouraged in the city's growth policy and is going to continue to happen in this neighborhood. And so if we are kicking the can of pedestrian safety down the road for what makes sense today, we're potentially setting ourselves up for issues in the future. So I'm not saying I have a particular position on what you should do with this decision, but I would ask that whatever you do, you make sure that you're having it be one that is ensuring the safety of pedestrians because there are kids that walk along that street to get to St. Andrews, to catch the bus to C.R. Anderson Middle School. Please make sure that whatever you are doing is with an eye to the future so that generations to come are going to have a safe passage to schools and for other pedestrians using that road. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
My name is Forrest Zimmerman. I reside at 2615 Knight Street, City of Helena. Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, echoing what Sarah Perry said, just adding one point to that, that this is, this section of Hauser is listed as a major collector, as a street, and would like to echo that any decision made here tonight, not taking a position against this property owner in any way, shape, or form, but just to want to voice my concern that it could be developed to a complete street, major collector standard, that anything decided along that road would allow that to be developed to a complete street without compromise. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments?
Mayor Commissioners, thank you for your time. My name is Paul Simonich. Worked as an engineer on this project, designing the sidewalks and curb and gutter. I just disagree, I guess, with the disadvantage of not requiring curb and gutter along Hauser there. It is a low point on that property, but if we don't have curb and gutter, it'll allow the stormwater to act like it currently does. It's in a low point there, it'll pool, and then it runs to the north. I just disagree that it'll undermine the sidewalk. The sidewalk will be built up and will allow the stormwater flow to the north without undermining the sidewalk. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Do we have any other public comments on this topic? Madam Clerk, do we have any online?
Mr. Mayor, I do have one hand raised online.
Would you put them through, please?
Sure. Harnik Singh?
You have the floor. Harnik Singh?
Mr. Singh? I can see that your mic is bouncing, but we're not getting any feed into the room. I would advise you that if you'd like to make public comment, you may also use the Q and A feature and write written public comment, and I'll be happy to read that into the record for you.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director Knopki, could I ask you a quick question? Is, just sometimes these variance requests and the widths and things can be a bit confusing. As far as pedestrians are concerned, we are, the variance allows for building a sidewalk. Is that correct?
Mayor Commissioners, yes. The building of the sidewalk along Hauser, it would just be, instead of the one foot from the property line, it would be six feet from the property.
And is there anything about that variance that would prohibit us from moving to complete streets later?
No.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, you? Go ahead.
I'd like to give Harnik Singh another opportunity to speak. Everyone, forgive me out there in Zoomland, we're learning a new system tonight. I've unmuted your mic if you'd like to try again.
You have the floor again. You're muted.
Okay.
Yes.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Yeah, so this is Haranj Singh, speaking on behalf of residing at 536 Sussex Court. And just wanted to echo Ms. Perry's point about thinking about, you know, what's going to serve this community going forward. We know as residents that, you know, there's just a lot of development and that development is going to continue. And even now, we know that our neighbor, our neighborhood streets really need more sidewalks for schoolchildren if they're going to be safe. And we just want to iterate or make the point that, that probably there should already be sidewalks and as we move forward and there's more traffic, that there definitely should be sidewalks for schoolchildren. So just wanted to make that point, pretty much has been made, but just want to make the point that we also believe that that is the case. So thank you for letting us speak and glad we were able to get over the technical difficulties, so.
Thank you.
Yes.
Do we have any other public comments? Madam Clerk, any other online?
Mr. Mayor, I do not have any other hands raised or public comment online.
Thank you. At this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a quick question?
Please, go ahead.
Thank you. Director Knopki, this prompted something I've been wondering about for a little while. What, I guess, what would be the steps of initiating a special improvement district on all these incomplete roadways?
Mayor and Commissioners, we're actually working with the Attorney's Office on outlining that process.
Okay.
But essentially, it would be identifying what the improvement area would be, identifying the improvements that we would look at for complete streets, and then going out to those adjacent property owners and seeing what their interest is. And then if there was interest in, you know, improving a particular block or blocks, then we'd bring forth that to the Commission. That's a very high-level overview summary. There's a lot of intermediate steps in there, but that's kind of the gist of starting the SID.
Okay, thank you. I think it'd be worthwhile for the Commission to start thinking about that just given how many of the variances in this particular neighborhood we get for these kind of issues. And as was mentioned, it's a lot of lots that appear to start, that are starting to be developed anyway on their own. So I think that it'd be worthwhile for us to start thinking about that.
Thank you. Comments? Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve a sidewalk variance allowing sidewalks adjacent to 870 Elizabeth Street along Hauser Boulevard installed six feet from the property line and allowing a waiver of protest for any future SID to be signed in lieu of installation of curb and gutter along Elizabeth Street.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any finer discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Previously tabled item, consider finer passage of an ordinance pre-zoning property described as the southwest of southwest of Section 23 Township 10 North Range 4 West, PMM Lewis and Clark County, Montana, together with a tract of land being portioned, allocated in Block 307 of the Bellevue addition as shown on the amended plat filed under document number 3310725 and Blocks 4, 5, 6, and 9 of Highland Park in Montana. Highland Park in Section 26 Township North, 10 North Range 4 West, PMM in Lewis and Clark County, Montana, as shown on the retractment filed under document number 3339312, SR2 Residential and R3 Residential. Director Brink, you have the floor.
Good evening, Mayor Collins and Commission. Like the item from earlier this evening, this will take an action or a motion to take from the table so we can reconsider and have discussion for this one. Once that's done, we can proceed with the presentation.
So, right now, Mr. Mayor, I will move to take from the table an ordinance that would, pre-zone property legally described as tract A as shown on Certificate of Survey number 3360858 of Survey number 3360858, and all of Blocks 4, 5, 6, and 9 of the Highland Park subdivision as R2 residential and R3 residential.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Madam Clerk.
Mayor, are you looking for public comment or asking for public comment at this time?
Yes, we can entertain public comments on this topic. Do we have any public comments on this topic? We're talking about table. Madam Clerk, any online?
Mr. Mayor, I do have some public comment I've received written online. I'll read it into the record.
Please.
While the city did not have to issue public notice for the second pre-zone vote, they certainly could have. As a contested issue with a lot of public interest, people wanted to know when this vote was taking place. The city would, would have, could have sent out letters to nearby property owners, posted signs on the property, et cetera, but they chose not to. They sent out letters about the commencement of Phase 1, but did not mention anything about zoning. That means many neighborhood members either do not know even though, and then I apologize, Mr. Mayor, it does cut off.
Okay. Do we have any others?
I do have, I do have one hand raised online. Mr. Singh?
Go ahead. You have the floor. Okay, we'll move on. Go ahead. I see you're off the mic. Mr. Singh, you have the floor. Do we have any other public comments, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, I, if with your permission, I would read the remaining portion of Anna Jane Pentecost's original public comment that was cut off.
Go ahead.
This does not allow the public their right to engage in a process that will directly impact their lives and property. You should table this vote until the public can be sufficiently noticed and given time to comment. Sorry, that cut off.
Okay. Do we have any others? I see Mr. Singh's hand is still raised. Are we still having difficulties getting him on?
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So, the question was the change of zoning laws, like, that was not conveyed to the public, like, we'd never got the information about the zoning, the change of zoning. And the question is that, right now, the building is allowed duplexes, but if we change the zoning, that will lead to multiplexes. And we're already having issue in the cul-de-sac for the safety from the ambulance reaching the people who are going to build the homes or the fire safety. So it's, if you're going to change this zoning, it's just going to increase the number of houses. Instead of duplex, it'll become multiplexes because of changing, changing the zoning laws. First of all, we never knew that zoning was going to be changed, and now it's just going to increase the hazard. We always thought even the duplexes were not safe, and now we're going to have multiplexes because of changing the zoning. That's all I want to bring attention to the Commission, that maybe the zoning doesn't need to be changed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, do we have any others on the previously tabled item?
Mr. Mayor, I have no other public comment online.
Okay. At this time, I'll entertain the motion for us to uplift this.
I think we have the motion.
Oh, yeah. And we have second?
Yes, correct.
Okay, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff? I see. Thank you, Commissioner. Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Okay. Now, we, Mr. Brink? Director Brink, sorry.
Again, thank you, Mayor Collins, Commission. This is for consideration, final ordinance passage for pre-zone for the West Side Woods major phase subdivision. Again, the subject is considered final passage of an ordinance pre-zoning property described as the southwest quarter, the southwest quarter of Section 23 Township 10 North Range 4 West, PMM Lewis and Clark County, Montana, together with attractive land being a portion of Lot A, located in Block 307 of the Bellevue Edition, as shown on the amended plat filed under document 3310725, and Blocks 4, 5, and 6, and 9 of Highland Park in Section 26 Township 10 North Range 4 West, PMM in Lewis Clark County, Montana, as shown on the retracement filed under document 3339312, as R2 residential and R3 residential. Some background, and you'll see some slides from your previous staff presentation from April 25, 2022, when this was originally scheduled for, for final pass. Originally, staff report for this.
Excuse me. What's going on?
Originally, this was a staff report that was dated 20, September 28, 2021, where staff recommended approval. Zoning Commission held a public hearing on October 5, 2021, and voted three to zero to recommend denial. Some additional background information on where we are tonight, November 22, 2021, City Commission originally had scheduled a public hearing for first pass for the same ordinance. That public hearing was tabled along with the other two occupying or accompanying applications for annexation and major subdivision preliminary plat. On January 24, 2022, City Commission conducted that rescheduled public hearing for the consideration of pre-zone, again, for West Side Woods. After the conclusion of that public hearing, that was publicly noticed as according to and required as former zoning ordinance, the City Commission considered the pre-zoning ordinance and voted to approve the first passage of said ordinance at a three to two vote. On April 25, 2022, the ordinance to pre-zone the West Side Woods major phase development was tabled at the request of the developer, and that was a five to zero tabling. Some background information, continuing the size of the project, 58.85 acres. It is the same as the current project that you took action on last month. Zoned urban residential mixed use in the county. It is surrounded by residential and open space. It is adjacent to and surrounded by R2 and R3 zoning in the city, county urban residential mixed use, and the Upper West Side Number Nine County zoning district. This will be annexed in four phases, and right now, the site is currently vacant. Again, from the original staff presentation, R2, so there are two zoning categories that are being proposed for the site. You'll see in yellow and then in tan on the, on the slide, R2 residential in yellow. This is mainly for single-family, auto moderate density, most common zone district in the city, and very few commercial uses allowed in R2. In R3, a single, single unit and multi-unit residential, moderate to high-density residential, and most commercial uses require a CUP in the R2, or R3, excuse me. Again, Zoning Commission decision, they voted three to zero to recommend denial of the zoning proposal. Traffic was a major concern. Reconfiguration of zoning districts was a concern, highest density of lots, me adjacent to existing residential was one of their concerns, and the overall number of lots in the development was a concern of theirs. Public comment and protest, this is as of 4/24/2022. Just to give some background, staff did not reopen the staff report process for this since it was a tabled item. So we let that continue as a tabled item, and staff did not interject, current staff did not interject and add to that staff report. So these comments are as of 4/22, 4/24/2022. Staff has received approximately 200 comments at that time. Most cited criticism was density, traffic, pedestrian safety, service, service capacity, and emergency evacuation. There were some supporting comments for this project or this zone change. Most cited provision of housing, job growth, and there was a petition submitted by the applicant supporting approximately 264 digital signatures. A protest of zoning was presented per MCA 762305. Staff reviewed those petitions and verified their accuracy and their validity. 25% of owners within 150, 150 feet of the subject zone change or amended map area, it was verified, and this amendment will not become effective except for a favorable vote of two-thirds of those present and voting members. So as we sit tonight, it will be a four to one vote to move this forward to final pre-zone. Again, just as previous staff, staff does recommend approval of final, final passage of ordinance pre-zoning this property described as the southwest corner of the southwest quarter of Section 23 Township 10 North Range 4 West, PMM Lewis and Clark County, Montana, together with attractive land being a portion of A, or partial, portion of A, located in Block 307 of the Bellevue Edition, as shown on the amended plat filed under document 3310725, and Blocks 4, 5, and 6, and 9 of Highland Park in Section 26 Township 10, township 10 North Range 4 West, PMM, and Lewis and Clark County, Montana, as shown on the retracement filed under document 3339312, as R2 residential and R3 residential. Again, I noted a vote must be four to one to pass this to final passage. I did want to make a note, as staff did catch it as I was sitting back, listening to the other items, the recommended ordinance that you have before you, one has been amended and updated from the, the ordinance that you saw last year to take into account the lot change, the numbering of lots and the lot changes within the project, as well as we, we do recommend a change, too, that we noted. The notation regarding the public hearing and first pass is incorrect. It was noted January 24, 2023 in both locations, and that should be January 24, 2022 in the adopted ordinance. And I believe that concludes my portion of the presentation. It does.
Comments from the Commission?
Mr. Mayor? I have a question for Director Brink. Can you, and if the city attorney would like to jump in, that's also fine. Can you discuss the protest statute and essentially what's required? So as I'm understanding it from your presentation, 25% of the neighbors signed the protest position, petition. So if you could clarify some of that.
So I will read verbatim the applicable protest provision. I will start with 76, I'll just read the whole thing, and end at the, I'll stop at the end of the protest language. Section 762305, Montana Code annotated, alterations of zoning regulations protest. Regulation restriction and boundary may be amended, supplemented, changed, modified, or repealed. The provisions of 762303 relative to public hearings and official notice apply equally to all changes or amendments. An amendment may not become effective except upon a favorable vote of two-thirds of the present and voting members of the city or town council or legislative body of the municipality if a protest against a change pursuant to subsection one is signed by the owners of 25% or more of the following. The area of the lots included in any proposed change, that would require the applicant to protest the zone change in this instance. B, those lots are units as defined in 7023102, Montana Code annotated, 150 feet from a lot included in a proposed change, which is where this comes in this evening. So we did receive more than 25% of those within 150 feet from the lot that's included in this proposed zone change. Did that answer your question, Commissioner? Or did I go roundabout way of not answering the question?
No, I guess my question is, so if there's 25%, what is the outcome?
Mayor, Commissioner Dean, the outcome would be that there is a required higher threshold for a vote on this, requiring the four to one vote for passage for this second final passage.
Okay, thank you. That's what I needed. Thanks.
My apologies.
But I appreciate you reading it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. For Director Brink, the number, the 25%, how many households does that, how many is that? What numbers are we talking about?
I knew you were going to answer, ask that.
Sorry.
Mayor, or Mayor and Commissioner, I knew you were going to ask that, and I do not have that number. 150, so just for instance, for the preliminary plat, just to give you a number, for the preliminary plat and amendment process that we just concluded, we sent out approximately 121 letters, and that was all residents within 300 feet. So I would dare say that's probably maybe two-thirds to a third of that number that constituted 25%.
If I might, just a follow-up. So aside from the lot number changes, nothing has changed from the pre-zoning that we considered back in January 2022. Is that correct? There's no substantive changes?
There is no substantive changes. The only additional change we did was make a change to the actual legal description. Legal description changed as submitted by the applicant in his current preliminary plat and annexation applications. So we just mirrored what he had in his legal description.
Thank you. And then just one more follow-up. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have received some public comment that references upzoning. And it is my understanding that there has been no change to the zoning since the original application. There have been no changes submitted about changing an R2 to an R3, for example. I just want to make sure that, that is correct.
Mayor Collins, Commissioner Reed, yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
Upzoning would lend you to believe that there's existing zoning on the property within the city. There is not. This is new zoning to be attached to the property.
Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Director Brink, so in your presentation and in feedback that we've received from the public, a zoning commission hearing has been referenced, I believe it's in October of 21, where the zoning commission recommended denial of what was proposed unanimously. Is there anything substantively, well, let me ask, I'll back up. Has, has the zoning commission considered this pre-zoning as, as it is, exists before us?
Mayor Collins, Commission, so has the zoning commission considered this new final ordinance? No, they have not. Nothing has changed from the original document or proposal that was presented to them. The only difference are lot numbers have changed. The extent and the expanse of what has been required, have been asked of for R2 and R3, those areas have not changed in size.
Okay.
Just the lot, no man culture.
A follow-up, Mr. Mayor. So I believe this may have been before your time in October of 21, but does, maybe does anyone on staff have any sense of what, what the denial was based on by the zoning commission?
Mayor Collins, Commissioner Logan, no. I do not, other than what I can read or look at from the previous record, and then I noted those that, that were highlighted in the previous staff report, that kind of referenced what their concerns were, and those were, were from their, their record, their minutes.
So, so that slide's basically a summary of their concern?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Brink.
Go ahead.
I have one more question.
Go ahead.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this, I'll preface my question. When we tabled this the first time, the When we tabled this the first time, the November 2021 meeting, what kicked off the tabling was when we moved to conditionally approve the annexation, we added, I had made the motion that added an additional condition to address the transportation safety issues that the zoning commission had noted. And then that was the time when, as I recall, the applicant, it was established between the city attorney and the applicant that we would have to table the rest because that would essentially change the application. So my question is, given that we've, we had additional conditions included when we approved the preliminary plat just a couple months ago, that included conditions to address safety concerns, transportation and other safety concerns, does the staff believe that those conditions will still address the safety concerns, given that it didn't go back to the zoning commission and there's additional context that happened after 2021?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Dean, so myself, existing staff did go back and look at and reevaluate the findings, well, they're not really findings, the standards for zoning that are outlined in the previous staff report. We still think those are valid and would still make the same recommendation today.
Okay. Thank you.
Any others from the commission? Public comments on this topic?
Mayor and Commissioners, I wanted to address Commissioner Reed's question about the numbers. We have here a map that shows all of the lots surrounding the property, and all but about eight of the actual adjacent property owners signed it. There's 71 lots that would all qualify, but keep in mind that many of those are owned by the city in Sussex. We had 60% of the qualifying lots that signed the petition. As you consider your vote tonight, I'd ask you this, can you confidently say that it's safe to have zoning that would allow the possibility of 170 units down a single dead-end street directly adjacent to thousands of acres of open lands? You had question about upzoning from R2 to R3. We may have used the wrong wording. By upzoning, what we mean is that duplexes are proposed for the R3 multifamily lot at the end of Flowery, Cortezales, Livsey Court. However, R2 zoning would be sufficient to accommodate those duplexes. The R3, we were calling upzoning in the sense that it's more than what is needed for what's actually proposed to be built. And while they may fully intend to only build 16 duplexes at the end of that long dead-end street, anything allowable in the R3 zoning could be built. I sent you some calculations showing that if that lot was built to the same density as the nearby Overlook Boulevard, there could conceivably be 170 units legally by that zoning on Flowery Court with a single point of ingress egress. As we saw with Mount Helena last year, it is a very real possibility that wildfire could threaten this community. When this same prezoning was tabled in April of 2022, over a year ago, local wildfire expert Pac McElvee spoke to you in opposition due to the numerous dead-end streets and potential for fire hazard. Just last month, the St. Peters ambulance director commented, expressing concerns about emergency response with these Westside Woods multifamily lots being placed on long dead-end streets. When the staff report was written almost two years ago, neither of those comments had been made. You're required to consider all relevant evidence and not just the recommendations of a nearly two-year-old staff report. If you cannot confidently say that the public is protected with zoning that would allow the possibility of 170 units down a single dead-end street, then by state law, you cannot vote yes today. While I'm sure it's difficult to imagine denying the prezone after conditionally approving the preliminary plat, keep in mind that this vote was originally scheduled over a year ago, but the developer chose to table it until now. That choice does not mean that the safety criteria set forth in Safe Law no longer apply. Please honor these safety concerns and ask for a better plan. The timing's not ideal, but again, it was the wishes of the developer himself to table it until now instead of voting on it prior to his most recent submission. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello, I'm Ed Santos, and I live on Flowery. So I want to also talk about this particular R3 zone. So on Flowery Court, there's an extra, there's a dead-end street, which is already inherently not the safest way to build a subdivision, but then it adds another street that is dead-end off the dead-end. So it's a double, essentially, dead-end. And not only that, but this is the definition of wilderness urban interface. So, and by the way, the prevailing winds for a fire is from south to north, so kind of coming across this way. So this section of the development, I think, is probably of, everything of this development is the most unsafe because of all the, because of the double dead-end street. I would like somebody from the commission to make a motion to change at least this one specific point from R3 to R2, if that's at all possible. I think by changing that, it won't make material change because it'll just make this, where all those other houses are, or condos, would just be a separate lot. And I think it would be in keeping to the safety of Flowery Court being a dead-end street as it is. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments on this topic?
Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, thank you again for hearing us. Forrest Zimmerman, 2615 Knight Street, speaking on behalf of Safe Helena West Side, representing a majority of the area of residents affected by this subdivision. A couple of things that weren't noted in the city staff report, although there was a reference to a petition on the developer's side of 264 members, an online petition which didn't have any specific concerns listed. It was online without verification of names, addresses, or intent. It drew people from faraway as England, Canada, and Mexico. So I ask you to please consider the validity of that level of petition versus the 600 people that signed the petition not wanting this, in addition to the over 60% of the area residents immediately adjacent, saying they didn't want this particular zoning. The Community Development Department has reflected before in previous discussions, in the 2021 discussions of this zoning. The urban standards, boundary, and the growth plan, that's a 10,000-foot view. That's as per our Community Development Department. That's a 10,000-foot view. It does not take on specifics of infrastructure and abilities. That has to be worked out at the actual votes for the preliminary plat and the zoning. Given that, we have, you have been presented with a minimum plan, a minimum build, and not, as the Community Development Department said was their policy during the previous discussions, the average build for this level of zoning, this density of zoning. Traffic would be as much as double. None of the studies done have taken that into account for infrastructure, for traffic, for sewer, or any of the other safety issues involved. So given that we don't even have that information, given that the Overlook subdivision, and I'm going to run over just a minute, if you'll give me, because I'm speaking on behalf of the number of people, I request just a few extra seconds. I'm not going to go long, if I could, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Given that during the Overlook Estates subdivision discussions by the City Commission back in 2005, they reduced, required, the zoning commission, as well as the City Commission, recommended not putting all high density for both Knight Street and Overlook. Overlook was left as higher density. Knight Street was reduced to single-family, and that was stated in, and this is public record, this is in the meeting minutes that we referenced. They said to keep a boundary between multifamily and longstanding, single-family. Knight Street should be single-family, not all high-density, as was originally proposed, which indeed is how it's built. It works quite well. Even though the area is very high-density because of all of the high-density that's down on Overlook Estates, the area, they said, that's as much as we can handle with the school there. So they recommend the change. Now we're talking doubling beyond that, the total traffic on Granite.
Okay, let's start wrapping up, sir.
Given those considerations that were before, the expectations of the longstanding residents there, the voice of the 600-plus petition, signed petition residents that were door-to-door knocked on in the area, not people from just all over, we ask you, we urge you to consider the fact that zoning also considers, beyond safety and the issues that have been stated, the nature of the subdivision. We would ask you to not put high-density R3 amongst multiple, multiple structures of R3 immediately adjacent to the longstanding, single-family. Thank you for hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, members of the commission, my name is Rob Ferris Olson with Morrison Sherwood at Wilson &amp; Diola. I represent Safe Helena West Side. You heard most of the concerns we have, but I did want to reiterate a few that were on arguably the previous discussion for the tabling motion. Just reiterating that most of the folks in this neighborhood did not get notice of this meeting. We didn't see it on the public calendar until last Friday, meaning a lot of those folks aren't here tonight and aren't able to put their public comments into the record opposing this zoning change. Secondly, I think it's also problematic that there were changes made to this proposal, again, without public notice, other than coming out Friday. While they may seem minimal, we haven't had a chance to review those because they weren't made appropriately public until a few moments ago, as you heard. As Commissioner Logan pointed out, the zoning commission hasn't had a chance to hear these changes. Again, we all may think they're minimal, the applicant and the city may think they're minimal, but until the appropriate body, the zoning commission, has had the chance to evaluate these changes, we don't know. And we don't know if they will address those concerns. So I would ask that this body at least table this motion again and send it back to the zoning commission to evaluate those changes before they consider it again. I would also note that the zoning commission hasn't been able to actually look at the preliminary plat that you all approved, so it would be great to give them some context to what they're evaluating. I think that's the most appropriate path forward, and that's what I'd ask you to do. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Mayor, Commissioners, Jeremy Fadness, WWC Engineering, engineer for the developer. I just wanted to again point out, as you know, this is a second passage of the ordinance. This was passed once before. The reason for the tabling was because the subdivision essentially was tabled because of the variance denials the first time. So we didn't feel it was necessary to bring this, keep this going, until we brought back an application without variances that you guys could review. The subdivision layout is essentially the same. The impacts are the same as what you've reviewed previously and with the preliminary plat that you've already approved with conditions. We are just simply asking to bring this forward and finalize this. You voted on this once. We're just asking for your consideration to finish this up. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Collins, Commissioners. My name is Sheriff Prezo. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Christiansen &amp; Prezo, and I represent the developer Sussex Development. I'm up here to talk about process. As Mr. Fadness just noted, this already has been pre-approved by the City Commission. Normally, what would happen is this would be placed on a consent action item, as it was, as you saw earlier today with the Mountain View Meadows subdivision. So this should have been a consent action item. It got pulled off consent action item because of the protest, but it has been our position, and we have submitted a letter to the City Commission back in May of 2022, that that protest is not valid, and there is specific law on that. I don't know. It appears as though that letter was not presented to the City Commission, and I don't know if this is an issue with the passage of time. We had submitted this information to the city attorney. I was under the impression that we were all on the same page, that the protest was not applicable in light of specific direction from previous Attorney General Joe Mizurich, as well as the Montana Supreme Court. And I'd be happy to present you with a copy of the letter that we prepared for Ms. Doctor back in May of 2022, but it's our position that this protest is invalid, should not be considered, and that the additional vote requirements are inapplicable to the vote. That said, it's our position also that this should be unanimously passed. It doesn't need to go back to the zoning commission.
Would you wrap up, please?
Yep. It's been through the zoning commission. It's already been approved by the City Commission in January of 2022. Helena is the only city that I'm aware of that has a two-vote pass for the zoning. This is nothing new. This didn't require public comment. It's already been approved. This is just the consent action item reapproval of the same vote that you've already taken. So I'm going to present this to the clerk.
Do we have any other public comments?
Thank you, Mayor and Commission. Derek Davis with Sussex Construction. I just wanted to point out a couple things. There's been talk of change in zoning, so there is no change. This is the same subdivision you voted on just over a month ago. There's also reference to a road on the R3 lots. Just a reminder to the commission that those roads, this is not the design. Whatever goes on those R3 lots, which do have legal and physical access to city right-of-way roads, whatever goes on there is going to go through the building department. It's going to go through a fire code review. So, you know, we presented 170 units on the development. Anything more than that, we'd have to go back through, look at what off-site improvements would be required, potentially, you know, if the units go beyond that, look at additional access and egress. So I just wanted to point that out. And just a reminder, this is in the urban area. Mountain View Meadows was also urban. It allows for a lot denser subdivision than what we've proposed. So just a reminder, Overlook to the north, about two and a half times is dense. The area to the east with infill is more dense. So this is nothing new. This is what you guys voted on just over a month ago. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any others? Madam Clerk, do we have any online?
Mr. Mayor, I do have some written public comment and two hands raised. Would you like me to start with the hands raised?
Please read the written comments into the record.
Teresa Molesky. Today, many dump trucks have come east on Flowery Street to Granite. Work on Phase Four has been worked on today. Why has the Phase Four been allowed to go forward? We need to protect our students with sidewalks if this continues.
Is that it?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. The hands raised?
First with their hands raised, I have Chelsea Colbon.
You have the floor, Chelsea.
Yes?
You have the floor.
Okay. Thank you. Mayor Collins and Commissioners, I encourage you to hear what some of the Save West Side Helena folks have said, and my comments are specific to, let's get this right the first time. This is going to be a great subdivision and provide additional housing, but let's make sure we get it right. I was listening to a committee meeting several months ago, and it dealt with sidewalks, and one longtime volunteer, you know, kind of threw his hands up and was frustrated that issues he saw in Helena 30 and 40 years ago in his neighborhood, where he has been that long, still exist, and the policies around that issue are still in place. And so encouraging all of us to work together and address the concerns that have been brought up and get it right, because it will be really wonderful, and everyone could be happy about it if we do get it right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Madam Clerk, any other raised, Dan?
Mr. Mayor, next with their hand raised, I have an individual listed only as Lou. If you would please read your full name for the record.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, this is Lou Dresen, and I live at 2600 Hauser, directly across from the subdivision. I guess my concern is currently the plan places a group of seven fourplexes just off Hauser on Livsey. And these fourplexes would, in effect, sandwich the existing homes between multifamily buildings. Those homes are on Knight, and I guess just the ones directly across the street from us would be fourplexes. You know, we are in a neighborhood that probably would be, if we were zoned, an R1 zoning, and place fourplexes, I guess, across the street is not what I would expect to see. And they certainly wasn't when I purchased this property. Back when the overlook was being proposed, the neighbors got together and we testified, and they did indeed change, as Forrest said, that one street closest to us to R2 from R3 to kind of provide that transition. And I would ask that you please look at this area and realize that how large it is and that it would be, I guess, in keeping with precedent to change that zoning, to not allow that density right next to houses that are right there, and I guess not expecting it. So I would agree with what the zoning board recommended, and that is to deny that, the density part of this, particularly right off Hauser. And I appreciate you taking that into consideration when you vote on this. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any others? Please.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. Thank you very much. I am Ron Barch. My business address is 360 Cavern A, and I'm the developer. And of course, we've been in front of you guys fairly recently, and you had approved, preliminary plat had approved our development. We're talking about zoning today. We've spoken about zoning, zoning now on this property for several years, and you voted last, the commission voted last, to approve this zoning. I'll just remind you that this particular property is two and a half times less dense than the property to the north. It's one and a half times less dense than the properties of a lot of the neighbors that have signed protest, that had protested on the zoning. I believe we, you know, I presented last time of why this is appropriate, and I had a lot of slides, and we had a lot of conversation about that. Again, as, as my attorney has pointed out, you know, normally this would be a, this is more of a procedural hearing, and however we've opened it to this forum. There's a lot of misinformation continually being made about this being more dense, lots of other things could happen, but again, that's not, that's not accurate. Hopefully, you'll build to understand, you know, you've reviewed this. I know you have. You've extensively reviewed this, and I trust that you will make the right decision and approve this. I'm available for any questions if you have. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, any others?
Mr. Mayor, I have no other public comment online. Oh, I apologize. I do, I do have a few more written public comments. First is Eve Byron. You have run roughshod over the concerns of the neighborhood, so I don't expect any of our requests tonight to be considered. But as I watch Sussex dump trucks and trailers travel past my house on the unpaved gravel Hauser Road, churning up curtains of dust for the past week, I would appreciate the requirement to first lay down a layer of asphalt to mitigate Sussex's impact on our neighborhood. This is only the beginning. Please make Sussex Construction be a good neighbor. Hannah Marin, please consider the safety of the existing neighbor, neighbors and school when considering the zoning of this area. I am not against development of the area, but I want it done correctly for the safety of Helena Westside. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, that is all.
Thank you. Said Attorney, Doctor, I heard something about procedure. Can you elaborate on that for me, please?
Mayor, Commissioners, yes. There was an argument by the developer's attorney that the protest provisions don't apply. I do think that there is a question whether or not they apply. We are, it may not become an issue, and if it does, we'll argue legally whether or not it does apply. The provisions of that statute, and that was, that was requested earlier, was about whether or not there is a change in the boundary of a zoning district. And because there is a change in the boundary of the existing one that would occur with this zoning, we opted to inform you about the protests. Are you, can you still hear me? Inform you about the protests and about the increased required vote. But of course, as you know, it doesn't actually become an issue until you vote. So city staff and I agreed, thought that it was most prudent to inform you and to allow the process to work its way out. And if indeed it becomes an issue, then we'll deal with, deal with it then. Is there anything else that I can address with that, Mayor, Commissioners?
Not from me. Commissioners?
So some concerns have been expressed here tonight about public notice. From your perspective, or how have we done?
Mayor, Commissioner Logan, thank you for that question. Public notice, and it was acknowledged by the public comment about this in this regard, was posted, as I understand, to the, to the website as late as Friday of last week, and that is adequate public notice by law. So even if, as acknowledged by the commenter, it was Friday of last week that it went on the website, that would still be adequate for a lawful legal notice. I don't know, because I haven't asked that question, and you might check that either with the clerk or director Brink, when it was actually posted, but I'm just taking it at face value, and it still provides public, a requirement for public notice. Does that answer your question, Commissioner?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, a follow-up to the clerk. Your perspective on the question, please.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Logan, I can certainly look at the exact date that the announcement was made from the city manager's office. The executive assistant to the city manager, Stephanie Reinhardt, is actually the individual that posts the agendas at the direction of the city manager. So if you'd like, I can actually pull up that information and answer if you give me a moment.
Please, and one more while you're doing that. So relative to the need for this to go before the zoning commission, that's been expressed here as well tonight, to go before the zoning commission again, your thoughts or staff's thoughts on that?
Mayor, Commissioner Logan, again, thank you for the question. That also has already gone before the zoning commission. They do not expire when they go before the zoning commission, if indeed there had been a substantive change to that presentation to the zoning commission. There would have been another presentation to it, but there is no requirement that it go back to zoning commission after a certain expiration of time, and that's all that's happened here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Logan, to answer your question, it appears that the original, I'm sorry, I'm having to do this on my phone. The email was sent on May 19th. So Friday as an amended meeting packet. One moment, please.
While you look at that, do we have any other comments from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, I do. I get, I have, I think, two questions for the applicant. So who, I don't know. Thank you. Someone, can you explain to us why you chose to pursue R3 instead of R2 for the entirety of the development?
Yes. When we were looking at this development, one of the main driving forces in putting it together was looking at what the, what the county, city-county planning board, sorry, the city-county, I'm sorry, I lost the, the name of the document, but we have for decades...
Can anybody help me? What's the name of the document?
Growth policy. The city-county growth policy has been in effect for last several decades, and it has always indicated this land, this section of land that we have proposed for development as being a high-density development. When we came forward with our, so that, that, that connotates that it should be, it should be high-density, and that's one of the things that you, as commissioners, often have this conversation, of trying to increase the number of folks that are in our city and creating more density, which also leads to housing, but it also leads to affordability. However, we chose only doing a lot less dense than, for example, the property to the north of us, Overlook, because we were also very cognizant of the fact that how the area had already been developed previously over the decades. So that was why we created something that was less dense than what was actually being indicated in the county growth policy. We felt that this was a good balance. Also, important to note, we could have went for other zoning that would have been much higher density. The R3 is a less dense than, say, R4, or, for example, it could have been, be other zoning that would have made that much denser. So that's the reasoning why we did that, Commissioner Dean.
Okay, thank you. And then, Mr. Mayor, my, my second question. How many units do you plan to build of the higher density that are not single-family?
I believe roughly 72, I believe is the number. So, and again, back to the density issue, density conversation, super important, and I, I wish, I wasn't prepared to go back through this, but I had slides that I presented before, so I'll be recalling your memory, where I had a map that showed our, our project, and then it showed the land to the north, Overlook, two and a half times denser. The, all the land that's to the west, to the east of us, one and a half times denser than what we proposed. And then we had the, the property that, the other development, Sussex Park, that is to the northeast of this, that was roughly similar density. So again, back to, this was very in line with, or less dense than what a lot of the properties in the area.
Mr. Mayor, so the reason I ask that is because it sounds like some of the concern from the opponents is that what's currently proposed is not actually what's going to happen. So I guess...
Yep. Thank you.
Can you explain whether you'll be sticking to this plan that's before us?
So absolutely. So one, when we put this proposal forward and you voted on approved, it was based off of 172 units. And then the, your city planning staff, they then go ahead and they escalate that, hey, what's the possibility of what you could build here? So a certain number of these lots, they figure that they could be duplexes, for example. So that's how we figure traffic. That's how the, all the impacts have been analyzed. However, as far as these becoming suddenly more dense like Overlook, we are held to building codes, we're held to fire code. So we couldn't suddenly decide to build a lot more, make it so much denser as the misinformation that's been proposed to you or presented. That, that's not possible. When we, when we actually design our sewer, sewer lines, our water lines, all of those will have a capacity and they'll have a limitation. So you can't suddenly say, oh, I was planning on putting 22 units there, and I'm going to put 150. It, it's simply, that's, that would be beyond what you approved, and that is beyond what we actually are designing too. Does that help?
Thank you. And then, Mr. Mayor, I have one final question, and that is for Director Brink. So Director Brink, I'm curious, is it possible for us to send this back to the zoning commission? The reason I ask that is because there has been a lot of context that has happened between 2021 and 2023. I think that when we discussed the preliminary plat, there's a lot of conversation, and I think our, our motions hopefully threaded the needle of finding solutions that would address safety concerns while also living up to the growth policy and, and what MCA requires of us when we make these decisions. And so I'm wondering if maybe you can respond to that question about sending it back to the zoning commission, or if you have a perspective?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Dean, you absolutely can send it back to, to the zoning commission for additional review. That's your prerogative. Staff did not, because when you tabled it, it kind of froze, froze the, the process in time to where, where it was tabled. So we did not send it back. We didn't anticipate that you wanted it sent back. Nothing has changed, but that is your prerogative to, to send it back to the zoning commission for additional comment and review. Absolutely.
Mayor?
Go ahead.
Just to clarify, what was, the question about notice, we assumed that it was Friday, city manager? Yes, thank you. It was actually Thursday that it was posted to the website and public notice was given.
I see that here. Thank you. And I know about the zoning commission, I know the city attorney has already determined that it's not necessary, so to speak. Okay, so do we have any other comments from the commission? Do we have any online? Let's see, we have two commissioners online. Anything, you okay? Okay, at this time, we'll move forward with a motion. Oh, sorry, Commissioner, I apologize. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Am I coming in, am I coming in okay?
Yes, you are.
No? Okay. I know there's been a lot of email traffic, and there's been a lot of concerns about There's been mention of Phase Four being worked on over Phase One, traffic near the I, I guess, if this question would be for Director Brink, is, is, are we holding the applicant to the 25 conditions that we had set upon them? Or how, are we holding their feet to the fire on this that, of what we approved? Does, if that makes sense?
So I can't speak to, to what they're doing on site. I'm not aware of any, any work that they're doing on site, other than perhaps some initial fire mitigation, as was a requirement that you placed on it. The applicant can, can better speak to, to what that, what they're doing on site. But regarding your question, Commissioner, yes, they will be held to the fire for those conditions. Make sure they're met. Absolutely.
Do we have any other comments from the commission? Okay. I'll entertain a motion. What's going on?
Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to make the motion. I just had some technical challenges and cannot find the motion language. So if you'll just give me a second, I will get there.
You bet. You bet.
Could someone direct me to the page that the?
112.
Thank you.
It is...
I'm, I'm just about there. Okay. Well. I would, Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve final passage of an ordinance pre-zoning property described as the southwest one quarter, of the southwest one quarter of Section 23, Township 10 North, Range 4 West, PMM, Lewiston-Cart County, Montana. Together with attractive land being portion A located in Block 307 of the Bellevue Edition as shown on the amended plat filed under document number 3310725 and blocks 4, 5, 6, and 9 of Highland Park in Section 26, Township 10 North, Range 4 West, PMM, in Lewiston-Cart County, Montana, as shown on the retracement filed under document number 339312 as R2 residential and R3 residential.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk, would you take the vote, please?
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Shirtless?
Aye.
Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
At this time, the commission will be, will be in recess for five minutes. Madam Clerk. Public hearings. Consider final passage of an ordinance amending Helena City Code Title 11, Chapter 2, Section 11-2-3, Table 1, 11-2-4, Land Use Definition of Zoning District, and 11-2-5 Supplemental Requirements of the City of Helena. Zoning Regulations as they relate to marijuana sale and operation. Director Brink, you have the floor.
So switching gears, thank you, Mayor Collins and Commissioners. This is amending Title 11 of the City Code, which is our zoning ordinance section, to include in our table of land uses and definitions and supplemental requirements, opportunities for marijuana sales and operations in the city. More specifically, again, this is considered an ordinance amending Title 11, Chapter 2, like you just mentioned, Section 1123, Table 1, 1124, Land Use Definitions for Zoning Districts, and 1125, Supplemental Requirements of the City of Helena Zoning Regulations as they relate to marijuana sales and operations. So some background for these code changes. The City of Helena passed ordinance number 3254 back in May of 20, May 20th, 2019, which permitted marijuana medical sales and operations in the city. Initiative 190, which passed by statewide public vote November 2020, which legalized adult-use marijuana and marijuana, and provisions of those were codified effective January 1st, 2022, and that is known as the Marijuana, Montana Marijuana Regulation and Taxation Act, and is codified in the Montana Code annotated at 1612201. Non-medical operations were permitted effective January 1st, 2022, and the state would issue licenses from that date to holders of valid medical marijuana licenses issued prior to November 3rd of 2020, which was the date of the election. Their license had to be in good standing, and the licensee had to be in compliance with MCA Department of Revenue rules and local ordinances in effect as of January 1st of 2022, which ours were. Beginning of July 1st, 2023, and then after, the Department of Revenue will begin accepting license applications for sales, cultivation, and manufacturing for all operations not formally or currently licensed with medical, as medical operations. So this ordinance, again, does three things. We amend the land use table to add a category for marijuana sales and operations. Previously, we had it split between medical, sales and medical cultivation under general business and agriculture. We've consolidated them under one land use category, being sales and operations, and then split out the ones, the five licenses that are issued by the state. You'll note the current zoning table has grow operations permitted in CLM and the MI zoning category with a conditional use permit. The proposed amendment has these as permitted use by rights, so we've eliminated the need for a conditional use permit as a standard practice when we do code revisions. But it does replace, it does place the, the operation in the appropriate zoning district according to operation size, which is defined as canopy. And we have those listed in subsection 1125I2A and 2B of the zoning ordinance under supplemental requirements. Just FYI, we have the split canopy size. Anything less than 1,000 square feet of grow space would be permitted in CLM. Anything 1,000 square feet or more in grow space would be in the MI zoning category for cultivation, cultivators. Again, we've added, right out of the state statute, definitions for the types of licensed facilities that the State Department of Revenue issues licenses for. Canopy cultivation, cultivation facility, dispensary, manufacturer, testing laboratory, and transporter facilities. Those are referenced in the land use table as well as uses. The zoning ordinance does revise supplemental requirements. This was a question last time at first pass. So currently, the way it's written, it's 500 feet to a school. Current recommended changes adds daycare, public building, public buildings, excuse me, and park from that 500 feet for a sales operation. Cultivation and manufacturer operation distances, this is a new one, it's 1,000 feet to a school or daycare. Currently, it's 500 feet to a school. 1,000 feet to RU, R1, R2, R3, and R4 ozone properties stay the same. We've included new distance of 500 feet to a public building or park for cultivation or manufacturing. And then currently, as it's written in City Code as well as state statute, 500 feet to a church, synagogue, or other places, place of worship. Cultivation facilities, again, like, like I mentioned, CLM, if it's 1,000 square feet or less in canopy size, MI if it's greater than 1,000 square feet. Cultivation facilities must be indoors and screened, must be in a secured and locked space, and they have to provide air discharge and a ventilation system for all cultivation and manufacturing operations. In existing medical operations are permitted to continue as operations, or they may change to the adult-use operations categories or sales in the same location and at the same size. So this question came up last time. There are currently three licensed facilities in the city that, that may be impacted, and this comes down to how it was initially measured from a distance standpoint. 235 East Lindale, they're within 500 feet of a park, which would be Kendrick, Legion Field, and Memorial Park. A facility located at East 104 East Broadway is within 500 feet of a park. It's actually less than 200 feet from Performance Park and Fire Tower Park. And then the last one that, that could be impacted, and this is one we mentioned last time, we're not quite sure how they, this one got approved by the state, but it came down to how it was measured. It was within their allowance. It's within 500 feet of a school. The way we would calculate it now, from a city standpoint, is less than 320 feet, but it would still be within the state's minimum requirements. And that adjacent use, or that nearby use is a project for alternative learning from the Helena public schools. So those are only three that would be impacted by these new requirements in the city. State requirements didn't change. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Brink, on the last slide, you mentioned that existing operations would be impacted. How would they be impacted?
So thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Logan? So if they wanted to expand their facility or change their facility to a different license type, all these are sales locations, there are no cultivators that would be impacted. They could not do so, they could not increase their size or increase their footprint, so to speak, without conforming with the city requirements, and right now, they would not be able to. They would be able to continue to operate as they are today.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Brink. Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
Can I just follow up on that? So we cannot do anything about these three listed, but if they were, they cannot sell the business either because the license is only for, for one entity? Is that accurate?
That's correct. It is a named license, not a site license.
Okay, so they're grandfathered in, but as soon as, say, the business closes?
That's correct.
No one else could go in there?
That's correct.
Okay.
They couldn't transfer their state license. That's correct.
Any other comments from the commission? Do we have any public comments? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, I have no hands raised and I have no written public comment online.
Okay, at this time, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I will move to approve an ordinance amending Title 11, Chapter 2, Sections 11-2-3, Table 1, 11-2-4, Land Use Definitions for Zoning Districts, and 11-2-5 Supplemental Requirements for the, of the City of Helena Zoning Regulations as they relate to marijuana sales and operations.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed? Thank you, Commissioner, Commissioner Shirtless. I see your hand raised. Thank you, Mayor Collins.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero.
Consider preliminary plat extension until May 7, 2026, for the crossroad amendment at Mountain View Meadows subdivision, including a commercial Phase 2 amendment for property generally located south of Highway 12, east of Crossroads Parkway, and west of Highway 282 in Helena, Lewiston-Cart County, Montana.
Director Brink? Brink?
Thank you, Mayor Collins and Commissioners. This is a three-year extension request for the crossroads at Mountain View Meadows, the crossroads amendment at Mountain View Meadows. I do want to say and make reference to, you'll see the date has already expired because it was a staff error that we did not bring this forward to you soon enough. I won't say that we forgot about it, but I might have. We have acknowledged that, that date has expired, and we've agreed to internally extend that date until you take action. So that's why you see a difference in the dates from, that it's already expired to, from May 22nd, which is today. So this is an overview of the site plan, showing what section, which is grayed out, that is existing, or that has not been developed, that will be subject to the extension request. Again, this is an overlay on the actual aerial photograph, showing what has been developed currently, what's outside of the crossroads amendment, and then those phases where they're, whether it's not construction, they have been final-platted and they're under current, they're under construction now, or that you've approved them under a different preliminary plat, i.e. Craftsman Village 8, 9, and 10. That stands alone as its, as its own preliminary plat now. Some development background on this project. May 2nd, 2022, Helena City Commission gave conditional preliminary approval for the crossroads amendment at Mountain View Meadows, which at the time created 956 lots from approximately 442 acres. There was an iteration before that, 700 and some odd lots and 300 and somewhat acres, if my memory serves me correctly, which it probably doesn't. Preliminary plat approval was for initial three years, which has subsequently been extended three times for additional eight years totaling 11 years. The most recent extension approval was set to expire on May 7th, 2023, which, as you note, is in the past. Criteria for evaluating an extension request, this is in Helena City Code, Chapter 12, Section 211G, under the subdivision regulations. Changes to the subdivision regulations since preliminary plat approval, and whether the subdivision is substantially compliant with new regulations. Phasing of the subdivision and the ability for existing development to be served by city services independent of future developments. Dependence on other development on any public infrastructure to be installed with the subdivision, and whether or not any changes to the primary criteria impacts identified in the original preliminary plat approval, or any new information not previously considered exist that creates any new potentially significant adverse impacts that would support denial of the subdivision extension request. Additional conditions may not be imposed as a condition of extension of the preliminary plat approval. I did, I did want to note, too, when this project was initially approved in 2012, the major phase subdivision allowance was not in existence at the time. So that's why you'll see ongoing extension requests, because there's no approved phase schedule. Staff conclusion and recommendation, extending the preliminary plat for additional three years to May 7th, 2026. I do note in the extension agreement, I think I put May 7th, 2023, so I'm not good with dates today, but May 7th, 2026 would be the extension that would allow the developer to complete the last remaining residential phases of development that are currently under staff review. The applicant speaks to it, but that, that is the peak section of the crossroads amendment. Staff finds and concludes that this extension is consistent with the extension review criteria. We recommend the following action and motion. Move to approve preliminary plat extension until May 7th, 2026, for the crossroads amendment at Mountain View Meadows subdivision, including the commercial Phase 2 amendment stated in the extension agreement for property generally located south of Highway 12, east of Crossroads Parkway, and west of Highway 282 in Helena and Lewiston-Cart County, Montana.
Thank you. Comments or questions for Director Brink? Do we have any public comments?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Try to get my volume correct. Mayor Collins and Commissioners, I'm Mark Grunkel, developer at Mountain View Meadows, with residences, with offices at 431 South Alice Street. I think you're familiar with us and as a long-term neighborhood development partner and currently the major provider of new residences in Helena. The crossroads plat was master-planned by Mountain View Meadows, Staley Engineering, and the Foley Group planners in coordination with the Helena Community Development Department. As Mr. Brink mentioned, this plat encompasses 400 acres and provides both residential and commercial lots. It was very well-vetted in 2012 and continues to remain functional and relevant. Planning the crossroads as a long-term endeavor allowed for a robust services background of streets and ample sewer, water, and stormwater infrastructure incorporated in those streets. This upfront planning was important for the provision of housing affordability and the long-term sustainability of Helena's maintenance budget. It was never envisioned that crossroads plat would be built out in three, six, nine, or even 12 years. The Peak's neighborhood, as Chris mentioned, is in this plat. It contains over 200 lots and, or home sites, at least some of those are condominiums. And we're excited to bring a number of those to market here in the next coming months. We, of course, agree with the staff's recommendation to approve this extension. Greg Worth, our engineer, and Rebecca Ryland, our director of design, are present this evening with me, and we're available for questions, and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Comments or questions from the commission? Do we have any public comments? Any other public comments, rather? Madam Clerk, do we have any online?
Mr. Mayor, I don't appear to have any public comment online.
I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Commissioner.
I would move to approve a preliminary plat extension until May 7, 2026, for the crossroads amendment at Mountain View Meadows subdivision, including commercial Phase 2 amendment as stated in the extension agreement for property generally located south of Highway 12, east of Crossroads Parkway and west of Highway 282 in Helena and Lewis and Clark County, Montana.
Second?
Let's move on seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk, would you take the vote?
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Shirtless?
Aye.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Consider Phase 1 commencement for the Westside Woods major phase subdivision. Director Brink?
You have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor Collins. Commissioners. This is the Phase 1 commencement hearing for Westside Woods. The exhibit in this is, this was approved in your phasing schedule for the overall preliminary plat for the phase development for Westside Woods. This shows Phase 1 for the project, which includes various number of lots as well as open space to be dedicated to the City of Helena. Written notice of commencement was received on April 12, 2023, as required in Section 7636174 of the Montana Code annotated. Prior to the commencement of each phase of the approved major phase development, the governing body shall hold a public hearing within 30 working days after receipt of the written notice from the subdivider to commence that said phase. After the hearing, the governing body, being the City Commission, shall determine whether any changed primary criteria impacts or new information exists that creates new potentially significant adverse impacts for this initial phase or for the requested phase. Again, per MCA 7636083A, these are the specific documentable and clearly defined impacts that consist of the primary criteria. Impact on agriculture, agricultural water user facilities, local services, impact on the natural environment, impact on wildlife and wildlife habitat, and impact on public health and safety. In addition, compliance with survey requirements, compliance with city subdivision regulations, local review procedures, as well as provision of easements and legal and physical access to the development. The City's Commission shall issue supplemental written findings of fact and may impose necessary additional conditions to minimize potentially significant adverse impacts identified in the review of the first phase and then subsequent phases as well of the development for changed primary review criteria impacts or for new information. Any additional condition, again, must be met before final plat approval for that particular phase. At this time and relative to Phase 1 of the Westside Woods major phase subdivision, staff has not identified any potential significant impacts requiring the imposition of mitigating conditions for this phase of the project. It is a new phase. It is the initial phase. Nothing has changed as of yet. Staff recommend, or staff conclusions, recommendation that we move that commission determine that there are no changed primary criteria impacts or is there any new information that exists creating new potentially significant adverse impacts for Phase 1 of Westside Woods major phase subdivision? And that concludes my piece.
Thank you. Comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead.
So this isn't necessarily for, well, it's kind of in general as these phases start commencing. What does the review look like when we start considering new information that might change some of the impacts? I'm thinking about some of the public comment we've gotten today about, you know, apparently some action or development happening on the property right now. I don't know if we're aware of that, but for example, dust, et cetera. What does that look like moving forward?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Dean? So the impact would be, how does the project itself impact those review criteria? Increase in traffic? Impact to wildlife or impact to public services? There's no construction yet. There's no impact to services or those particular review criteria. Dust and noise and, you know, those type of things is not one of those review criteria. It's more related to the impact of that developed phase of the project. So you would anticipate there's no impact yet. Perhaps Phase 2, 3, and 4, there may be unforeseen impacts from Phase 1 regarding those review criteria.
Okay, and so that's when we would start considering those?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from the commission? Any public comments?
Wanted to thank the city staff again for all their hard work on this development as we have gone through these multiple levels of review on many different topics. As you have seen, there's kind of two variations at this point. Mountain View Meadows was previous to the current law for phase subdivision development and they weren't, they're not bound by this commencement process. And so essentially what the legislature did was they just added for phase developments to, that we have to notify the city. Once we've got preliminary plat approval, we have to notify the city that we're commencing the design, engineering, and construction of that phase. And that gives the city the opportunity and the public again, an opportunity to review the primary criteria as staff has indicated to see if there's any new impacts or changes. So that's what we've done. We've notified, we have in our phasing plan, we're required to final plot Phase 1 by the end of this year. And so obviously, time is of the essence. Our construction season has started and we need to get moving. So that's, that's the impetus for this is to get that notice, notification into you guys so that you can do this process and we can get engineering plans submitted to the city for review so we can get infrastructure installed. So that's why we're here tonight. The, just to answer your questions on some public comment, there has been a little bit of construction traffic out there because the developer is starting the process of getting their BMPs in place for, to start construction of the infrastructure. Roads need to be roughed in before we can install water, sewer, gas, power, all those things that are going to be required for Phase 1. They have gotten all of their permits from the county. Those roads out there right now are not city roads yet until you annex them. So they're currently county roads. The developer has received their permits from the county for approach permits and those sorts of things for their work. So they are, that's what they're working on at this time. So just, we are not changing anything. We have not provided any new information. Everything is just as you have approved six weeks ago or so. So available for questions if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comments?
Honorable Mayor, Commissioners Forrest Zimmerman again on Knight Street, speaking for Safe Helena West Side, specifically representing or speaking on behalf of several of the residents on the westernmost block of Knight Street and the westernmost block of Overlook Boulevard in reference to the storm drainage from the subdivision, the proposed subdivision. As you'll recall, in the commission, in the consideration of the preliminary plat, the issue of the stormwater path that was proposed by the developer was to go through the apartments owned by Bob Kohler, who spoke at that meeting. The permit was denied or the easement, or the path that the developer had during that, on that property to drain or remove the stormwater from the property. That easement was not valid, considered not valid by Mr. Kohler and apparently, as reflected by him, that path is not being considered by the developer. However, we've had no proposal for where the stormwater is going to go. What are we voting on? Where's it going to go? Stormwater is a huge issue and it's important to those residents because we, we've already had flooding in that area from Overlook, the way Overlook was constructed. There's groundwater problems. There's people have had to dig large amounts of dirt out around their basement at their own cost from stuff that, from a subdivision that was approved by the city and they were provided no remedy. They had their tens of thousands of dollars to remediate water problems. Are they going to have to get flood insurance in case this stormwater system doesn't work? If water comes in from the outside, the resident concern, their house could be flooded. Are they going to have to get flood insurance because of the storm plan? So we would like to have a, the storm plan, the stormwater runoff plan submitted in detail so that it can be reviewed and by the concerned residents, including engineering review, to confirm if it's going to be adequate and if it's not, to raise concerns. Now that's important because other, other engineering reports from the developer have been reviewed by the city's traffic engineering group they had reviewed, the traffic study. They found major issues. Our engineering group found major issues. The stormwater, the sewage, sewer capacity. Morrison Merle did their, their report at the request of the city. They found major contrast to what the developer submitted. So we would like the opportunity to have the chance to review that so that we don't have the problems like are being seen at Heron Creek that the residents are left without a remedy. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor and Commissioner, I would ask that you please consider several pieces of new information that illustrate previously unknown traffic impacts, which are some of the criteria to be considered today. Some previously unknown traffic impacts that require additional conditions for Phase 1 to ensure safety of schoolchildren. Today, dump trucks from Sussex Construction were driving along Granite all day between Flowery and Hauser. So this stretch right here between Flowery and Hauser, which is not slated to get sidewalks until Phase 4. Already today, my three young children and their friends were walking home from Granite with no sidewalks and had to share, and had to share the entire length of that very road with huge construction trucks working on Westside Woods. My second grade son asked me before I left his track practice to come to this meeting today to please ask you, put sidewalks on Granite from the start of this subdivision. He said, Mom, trucks have to drive around me all the way onto the other side of the road when I'm walking home from school. And when cars are coming in both directions, he said, I have to hop off the road, which is hard to do in the winter when there's snow. It's not just Granite from Hauser or from Kessler up to Hauser that will be impacted with the start of this project. It's the entire length of Granite and it was already happening today. When the NIMTAC performed its walk audit in earlier this year, NIMTAC member Kevin Reichoff, who has attended multiple walk audits, said the pedestrian conditions on Granite were the worst he's ever seen on any walk audit. However, that walk audit report nor the NIMTAC's recommendations for associated improvements, what they recommended be it done to improve the area around Westside Woods, neither of those reports were considered as findings of fact in the staff report. Please consider that information now. We'll be heading into the upcoming school year and subsequent winter with construction trucks continuing to drive along Granite. No sidewalks, no streetlights for children going to and from Kessler, St. Andrews, and CR Anderson. This is a potentially fatal combination. It's irresponsible and reckless to wait all the way until Phase 4 of development. Dump trucks today were taking fill materials from the west end of Flowery Court, down Flowery, onto Granite, and taking it around to get down to Phase 1. There's no way to ensure that construction trucks will not be driving early in this project on roads that have no plans to include sidewalks and yet are safe, and yet are side, excuse me, and yet are routes to schools. Please don't wait for a child to get hit before acting. Safe routes to schools have been a strategic goal of this commission for a number of years. The citizens of Helena have been asking you to please do all you can to honor that goal. We're asking for sidewalks, not sidewalks on all the area streets in Phase 1, but simply on one route to school so that the kids in this neighborhood have one way to walk safely to school. I don't think that's too much to ask and I would hate to come before you again after someone's been hit to ask you why you waited so long to do something. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening.
Commissioners. My name's Ed Santos. I live on Flowery. That was tough to listen to. I kind of want to mention the same kind of thing. So conditions of annexation, they, the builder needs to put in sidewalks. They need to improve Granite. My understanding is that this was supposed to be done before any construction begins. Fire mitigation up on the hillside was supposed to happen before any construction has begun. And yet we have trucks driving building roads already. Perhaps this topic needs to be tabled until those conditions for annexation are completed. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, Rob Ferris Olson again with Morrison Sherwood Wilson Deal and I represent Safe Helena West Side. The first thing I want to bring to your attention is that we still have not seen the written findings of fact this commission theoretically voted to approve from April 10. Those are due today. We were promised we would see those before this commission meeting. We haven't seen them. They're not posted on the website. They haven't been emailed to us. So what that means is we can't adequately determine whether there is new information because we don't have a written decision of what the old information is. Similarly, you all can't determine what is new information because you don't have what those findings of facts actually are. We believe that that, without that written decision and without those findings of fact, that this consideration of Phase 1 is premature because the preliminary plat has not been approved until a written decision is issued. By way of example, we can't challenge it in a court until we have the written findings of fact. Meaning, in a corollary, y'all shouldn't be able to implement Phase 1 until there's a written decision. So that's my first major concern. And that's, again, similar to the transparency issues we talked about before. It's happening again here. Secondly, there are new, new information that this body needs to consider. But because you don't have the old findings of fact, you don't know what that is. It's the stormwater drain. If you look at the map that was presented to you with Phase 1, that stormwater still goes through Bob Kohler's property. I don't believe there's an easement through that property yet. You were told at the preliminary plat hearing that there's an alternate route down, can't remember the street name, but just to the east of it. The public hasn't seen that plan. I understand their adverse impacts to those potential landowners. They haven't seen the plan. What is that plan? Without this information, I don't think you can approve Phase 1. Last, I think, again, just, there's no way and ultimately, there's just no way for you all to determine what is new information and whether this plat should be approved. And I'm very concerned about the lack of transparency on both of the issues before you today. The public has a right to understand what's happening in their city, what's happening in their backyards. And with both the pre-zone and this, they don't have that opportunity. So with the, as with the pre-zone, I'd urge you to at least table it, if not deny it outright because we know there are adverse impacts. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of the commission. Sorry.
Do we have any other public comments? Any online, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, I do have one written comment and one hand raised online. Would you like me to read the written?
Please.
Anna Jane Pentecost. I am a parent of three Kessler kids and went on the MTC walk audit at Kessler this year. I saw how scary Granite is with no sidewalks and cars flying past. Today, there were Westside Woods dump trucks already driving the whole length of Granite. Please keep schoolchildren safe. of Granite. Please keep schoolchildren safe and require an additional condition for phase one that sidewalks be built on the entire length of Granite prior to the final plat of phase one. Please don't delay." First in the queue with their hands raised is Corey Chenoweth.
You have to flow, Corey.
I actually kind of had forgotten that, that the meeting was tonight and probably wasn't even going to attend until, until I was picking up my, my kids at Kessler today and saw dump trucks barreling down the steep grade hill to Hauser down to Euclid there. And that was a real eye-opening experience for me. And I won't belabor the point because I think Ms. Perry and others have, have, have done a great job of illustrating that. But it's, it's something that became real to me today of how narrow that road is and how there are no sidewalks for kids going to school, going home, and how big tho, those vehicles are, those construction vehicles are, and how much room they take up on that road. So just, once again, just would implore you to, to consider having sidewalks all the way up and down Granite at the start of this phase, just for, purely for safety of the children attending Kessler, walking to and from school. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any others?
Mr. Mayor, I have no other public comment online.
This time we entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question, if I can.
Please.
Thank you. So obviously some pretty significant concerns just expressed there. I may be missing one, but I heard stormwater from Mr. Zimmerman, the really serious sidewalk concerns from Ms. Perry, and then Mr. Ferris Olson indicated, and I don't know the validity or not of this, but the findings of fact and the requirement that those be available at this point. And I guess so I'd be interested to hear from staff on, on those things if possible.
Mayor, Commissioner Logan, thank you. I will try and address the three, three I heard to the extent I can, and then defer to staff if I can't. The first one, the third one you mentioned was the one I'd like to address first, which was the requirement in statute that a written statement be prepared. That has been prepared. The mayor signed it tonight. It will be posted to the website today and will satisfy the requirement for it to be done within 30 working days of the governing body's decision, which was April 10th. So it will satisfy the statutory requirements for issuing that written statement. It is not the written statement's intention by statute to be the decision. It's instead a reflection of the decision that was already made on April 10th. And so though there were statements about you all not knowing what was in the findings of fact and conclusions of law, you indeed decided the findings of fact, I'm sorry, not conclusions of law, you indeed passed the findings of fact in your April 10th meeting. And there is nothing in the written statement that can change that because it's just intended to be a reflection of what you already passed. So there's nothing different than what you already heard and considered in that written statement. And in fact, it is verbatim to what you considered on the record on April 10th. So you do have that in front of you and can consider those. That being said, there was a discussion about the phase development and how you can't consider that because you haven't gotten the written findings. There is no requirement by statute that there be a chronological order in which these are issued in this, for this project. So in other words, they can and have overlapped. The written statement is required to be issued 30 calendar days after the governing body makes its decision. The phase development is required to, the developer is required to give notice. And then the commission has to consider within 30 days at a hearing that phase development notice. So that, we received, the city received the notice and it triggered the requirement for this public hearing to be held today. And we are complying with that statutory requirement to do so. So there is a bit of an overlap, albeit just one day, or actually simultaneously where these are happening. So those, I think that answers the issues that were raised about the statute and timing and requirements. I, I'll pause there. Is there anything missing from that you have questions about?
No, thank you.
Okay.
On that particular matter, thanks.
Mayor, if I may, I can address the, the other requirements for new findings. And I think that'll address perhaps some of the stormwater and the sidewalk issues that Commissioner Logan addressed. In the statute itself, it requires that there be new potentially significant adverse impacts for the phase or the phases, for it to trigger any different findings of fact in this consideration on this phase development. And so that would have to be a finding you would make, you would have to make in the information presented here, that it was potentially significant adverse impact that was new, that you hadn't heard in your consideration for April 10th. And so I would ask that you consider that and have a discussion about that before you decide to propose any other findings of fact and therefore conditions on this phase development. Both the stormwater and the sidewalks were issues that were considered in the findings of fact and the written statement and as you passed them on April 10th. So I would ask that you make it clear on the record, if indeed you want to have that discussion, about what is new now about this information. Is there anything else that I can address?
Thank you. Attorney Doctor, do we have any other comments or questions from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, I think this is probably for Director Brink. Can you maybe summarize the, so we, we already heard the concerns about the, the stormwater piece at the last meeting. What are the next steps in terms of the development as they are developing the property in terms of that?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioner Dean, so the next steps are really on the backs or the requirements of the developer to button up his infrastructure plans, get them to the city to review for compliance with city codes and the conditions that you passed.
And so with those, those conditions, those, because we added those other conditions that were meant to help address the safety concerns within what MCA allowed, that's when that review happens. Is that correct?
Commissioner, Mayor Collins, Commissioner Dean, I think I understand your question, but, but essentially those conditions would be met at the final plat stage. So we would ensure that the, the development, developing documents, the, the infrastructure plans have those provisions in there to meet them. But ultimately, those conditions don't have to be met until final plat.
Okay. And then my final question, Mr. Mayor. In terms of any activity that's happening right now, I guess what is allowed and not allowed based on what we've already established in the preliminary plat piece?
Mayor Collins, Commissioner Dean, it could be better served for, for, for either Director Leland or Knopki to answer these. But essentially preliminary work that's, that's happening on the, the project is, is outside of our requirements to, I won't say police, but to acquire that to be pre-approved. Currently, the property is in the, in the county. So they do have to get their initial permits and approvals and encroachment agreements from the city to do preliminary work that they need for their, their SWIP and their stormwater infrastructure, putting in a construction entrance. All that stuff starts before construction. I think that answered your question.
I think so. I don't know.
Maybe?
Yeah, I think so. I don't, don't know if Director Knopki has anything else he wanted to add. I think Director Leland's online too, but I think that answers my question. I just don't know if there's anything else. And he's shaking his head no. Thank you.
Any other comments from the, uh, commission? Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Make a motion determining that there are no changed primary criteria impacts and there is no new information that exists creating new potentially significant adverse impacts for phase one of the Westside Woods major phase subdivision.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any final discussion? Madam Clerk?
Commissioner Dean?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Shertliff? Commissioner?
Aye.
Thank you. Mayor Collins?
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
At this time, is there anyone from the public wishes to address the, the commission?
Sorry, I can't hide my disappointment here. We've asked for compromise, we've asked for you to listen, and we've asked for you to hear the public, your constituents who are concerned, and you haven't done that. So I'm going to ask you one more time tonight. With your votes tonight and other subdivision proposals already in review and presented in pre-application meetings, infill, et cetera, there are a thousand or more housing units planned to be built in Helena in the coming years. And yet the city is continuing to operate with outdated engineering standards. City staff drafted changes to the standards starting back in 2018 or sooner. That means city staff saw a need for change five years ago or more. But this commission has still not acted on those recommendations and continues to push it off in your administrative meetings that I've listened in on. It's my understanding that thousands of taxpayer funds were used to have a third-party engineering firm review the standards, and they also recommended adoption. Your city staff have spent countless hours engineering to put these updates together. That's a lot of tax dollar money spent on their salaries and their time that could have been done doing other things. These updates are much overdue and should not be continued to delay them. You relied on engineering staff's recommendations as your justification for approving these subdivisions, for refusing to make new conditions added, to put schoolchildren's safety first, and you hid every time behind the fact that staff said it was okay to approve it as is. So why aren't you relying on those same staff's recommendations to pass and adopt the updated engineering standards that they've drafted? Please be consistent and be principled in how you listen and justify your decisions. Please, with the same eagerness that you've passed these subdivision proposals, pass and adopt the updated engineering standards. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Honorable Mayor, Commissioners, reflecting on, or just furthering what Sarah Perry said, again Forrest Zimmerman, 2615 Knight Street. For the engineering standards, and I'm speaking individually this time, not on behalf of the residents of Safe Helena West Side, we did participate in some of the public interactions with those standards. And as an engineer, I, I saw a lot of benefits to them, including things that would directly benefit city staff in terms of how things are documented and, and passed to them so that the review process can be less arduous and arbitrary and can save, and make more use of their time. As we know that we are not overstaffed in that department. I think that's quite clear. This would go a long way toward helping our city staff. So I would echo what Ms. Perry said. And if, if you could work toward, moving toward those standards being enacted, that would be, I think, a benefit to the city staff and to the residents of Helena in this process. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any others? Do we have any online, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I have no public comment online.
Any final discussion from the commission?
Mr. Mayor, just really briefly, I just want to take a second to thank our clerk of the commission and Montana Pro Audio who are responsible for all of the upgrades in this room. It'll also be in our administrative meeting, uh, room as well. I think that the audio clearly in this room is a lot better and the visuals. I know we're still working out the bugs, but this is part of a very concerted effort to help modernize how we interact with the public and, and make things accessible and easy to use. And really appreciate all their hard work over the last year and a half, two years, three years, to get to this point. I think it's significant improvement and I appreciate all your work.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Mayor, if I might, I, I would just add that Superintendent Sampson and Bridget Johnson from his staff are largely responsible for making sure that all of this has gone off to that level. So I would like to say thank you for all of their help.
Thank you. Any other final comments from the commission? This meeting is adjourned.